Chang, Delgado, Fontelroy, Hertz, Marsh, Chabaz, Tibbet. Council President, we are formally awaiting the presentation. The present and future citizens of America, we are proud to witness this change. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll now have the invocation by Reverend Dr. John W. Howard Sr. from the New Hope Baptist Church, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Thank God we thank you for this moment. We ask that you look on our mayor, we ask that you look on every council member. We ask that you look on this reigning congregation. Oh, strengthen this council and let them learn to harmonize with one another. And even in disagreement, strengthen them like never before. Be with them, lead them, and guide them, we pray. Amen.
I would note that this meeting has been provided as required by law by the city clerk, sending to the press and the Philadelphia Inquirer on January 2nd, 2018, and published on January 8th, 2018, and to the Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2018, and published on January 8th, 2018. A list of the meetings for the council of the city of Atlantic City, including notice of the meeting scheduled for October 24th, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. in the Hank Tider Council Chambers, room 206, City Hall, 1301 Backrack Boulevard. And also a copy of said notice was posted by the city clerk on the bulletin board, main lobby, first floor, on the same date. All of the aforementioned devices of NJSA 10:4-6, EdSec, known as the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Law, and NJSA 40:69A-179. This is a regular council meeting of the City Council of Atlantic City. Before we begin, please be aware of our rules in this chamber. All persons are to be seated unless all seats are filled, in which case you may stand against the wall in orderly fashion. We are asking that all gentlemen remove their hats. All persons are to remain quiet during these proceedings. This is so that everyone is able to hear what is going on. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. No one shall speak unless they are invited to do so by the council president. Shouting, interrupting, speaking out of turn, or acting disorderly in any fashion will not be tolerated, and anyone doing so will be removed from the meeting. When and if you are invited to the microphone to speak, please state your name and address. You will be allotted three minutes for comment. Please respect the time for other persons and end your speech within the three minutes allowed. If it is your intention to ask a question of council, you will be permitted to ask a maximum of two questions. Your questions are to be clearly stated, and after the questions are asked, you are to take your seat. The council president will determine if the question can be answered and by whom. Finally, please understand that there will be no personal attacks or name calling. If you do so, your time will immediately be cut short and you may be asked to leave. Okay, we have reports and recommendations from the mayor. Ordinance numbers 25, 26, and 27 of 2018 were signed by the mayor on October 1st, 2018. Council President, have we any committee reports?
Ms. Bass. Council President, I have two reports. In the absence of my colleague, Council Vice President, Aaron Randolph, Aaron Sporeman, he asked me to give a report from Public Safety and Public Works Committee. We had our regular meeting on Wednesday, October 10th, and three items that he wanted me to stress. One was the Civilian Review Board, which will be a Citizens Advisory Board, as presented by Special Counsel Jim Johnson. And we agree with that recommendation committee, and there will be a board that's coming forward to amend the Civilian Review Board to a Citizens Advisory Board, and the public will be hearing more about that. The genesis of that idea is to have greater cooperation between the police and the community, and we are convinced that that will do that. We also talked about bus shelters throughout the city that they are in need of repair, and the council vice president asked me to assure the public that he is working diligently in his community and other areas of the city to repair the bus stop. Class 3 officers are officers that the schools pay for, for extra security, and we will be bringing legislation forward about that shortly. Lastly, Mr. President, on the agenda today is a resolution to accept a 2011 Lincoln automobile for use by the Atlantic City Police Department. I believe that's on the agenda, and I would ask my colleagues to support that. For planning and development, we had our regularly scheduled meeting, and on the agenda of four items, I would ask for support. One is the bulkhead funds, and we've had many discussions, Councilman Tibbet and Councilman Chang. This resolution speaks somewhat to that, and hopefully with the building of the bulkhead that will somehow address the problems that we've had with the flooding. Also, we have a resolution to reject the bids for the Kingston Avenue Playground, which is really self-explanatory, and the Atlantic and Ohio Avenue Bike Ways. Mr. President, we are asking for support on that. And finally, a contract, a legal contract for John Scott Abbott, who is his only board solicitor. And I think we have one other item. Also from planning and development, we're going to join our colleague, Councilman Hertz, with regard to his resolution on needle exchange. We believe that his resolution speaks to where we need to go in reference to the city development, and he will talk about that in his report, but our committee stands unanimously to support his work.
Council President, I guess I'll start with the ordinance there. And just to clarify, in our agenda, it's noted as ordinance rescinding the enabling ordinances. That's not what this measure is this evening. That was a measure from earlier in the year that was tabled at the time, which kind of provoked this conversation. Our committee, since that was pulled, has engaged both the stakeholders as well as people from the community and done tremendous research on this issue, and we're of the mindset at this point that having a physical, established stationary location is not conducive to the revitalization of this town as well as the effectiveness of the program. Through some work with the colleagues and some conversations with some other entities, we're working on not only making it mobile only, which is what the ordinance tonight will do. It makes the program mobile access only, but also in terms of trying to assist in getting those resources so the program will continue in that different form. And so that is the ordinance up for consideration tonight. In addition to the needle exchange ordinance, there are five items coming out of committee. There's a grant for childhood lead poisoning prevention. Want to applaud the health officer and his staff. It's the second year that we've gotten this, and it's actually an increase over last year, which is great. We need funding for the prevention of lead poisoning. There's property liens, which is when the city does work on an abandoned or a property that is, when somebody is not living up to their standards of either boarding up windows or allowing grass to become overcut, we'll send out people, and then we get reimbursed for that. Maintenance, there we go. Pardon me. Amusement games license renewal, adding to a bike-friendly city or a bike rack on 4301 Bender Avenue. And lastly, want to applaud Lowe's Home Improvement, who's stepping forward with the gift of a dog park improvement at Delancey Park. So we want to applaud Lowe's. And that's my report.
Before I get my report, I know, you know, the city council had decided to support breast cancer awareness month, and all of us are wearing some form of shade of pink. Thank everyone for getting a memo. Do you feel me looking at you? It's all good. It worked on the state. It's in its heart. It's in its heart. All right, I have two reports. One for revenue and finance. We have an item that is from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and it's for the Caspian Avenue and Gardens Basin Bulkhead Grant to the tune of over $3.6 million. We received a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for $24,042.50. Another item that has been going on close to the last two-plus years is approving the terminally payments for retirees. We finally came to a resolution in that matter. Also, another item on revenue and finance is the, we had to refund for police and fire for helicopter rooftop lift for Hard Rock. And also, we authorized the Department of Revenue and Finance, the City Solicitors Office, and the Police Department to have petty cash accounts. To forecast the future, we have began our meetings crafting the 2019 budget. We're definitely looking forward to 2019 to be a much better year for taxpayers, our employees as well. Discussions are ongoing on the way to keep the taxes down, as well as some type of reward for our employees who have suffered far and long. And who could ever forget that two years ago, when we were talking about shutting the government down, and employees had an option to, you know, to take a layoff and get unemployment, and some of them wanted to help out the city and the town in need, and many of them offered volunteer. But we came up with a way. It wasn't the best thing but to pay them, you know, once every 28 days and keep everybody going in way of much, much, much better shape fiscally. And, you know, we're looking forward to rewarding employees throughout City Hall and saving the taxpayers' money at the same time because that is definitely key. So we will keep you posted on the 2019 budget. Also, in addition to revenue and finance, I chair the Administration and Governmental Affairs Committee, and we meet with CRDA once a month. Just some brief items on the agenda, as you know. CRDA has helped sponsor two big basketball tournaments at Bull Walk Hall. We talked about having a homecoming game for two of our local Atlantic City, you know, area kids who have went on to college to play. So we're trying to get that as a standalone game or as a part of a classic like they have with the tournaments that they have this year. Councilman Marsh had came up with the idea, since the vast improvements, which we get ready to get into now, that Hard Rock and many local contractors and our fine city employees contributed, you know, to Dolphins Field renovation and the installation of a brand-new scoreboard. We talked about securing everyone's investment by placing cameras on the clubhouse and alarm system. I know Councilman Chabaz spoke about the possibility of Atlantic City being in the running to host the 2020 National NAACP Convention. We talked about that. And here's a sore spot, and I promise everybody that I'm going to keep speaking about it until we get the proper answers. Once again, Atlantic and Pacific Avenue is still out of control. It is unacceptable. We don't see that in no other downtown, anywhere in the country, even some of the worst areas in the country. You don't see people walking around the town like that, spaced out, drugged out, et cetera. And we have to keep doing it. And I understand that everybody falls on hard times, and, you know, at the end of the day, no matter what the situation is, we're all God's children. But that's not acceptable in none of the neighboring towns. It's only allowed in Atlantic City. And it too, and it's great, we had a beautiful summer, you know, Hard Rock, ocean, you know, the entertainment that's going on in this town. We have momentum. But how can we actually stand up there and say that, A, we're a first-class city for our residents, and B, that we're a first-class tourist destination, when all they got to do is just take a hop, skip, and a jump across Atlantic Avenue, and they won't come back to Atlantic City? So we got to get our house in order. And every single meeting and every time I have the public's attention, I'm going to say it because it's not acceptable, it's not fair. You can't even go to Rite Aid, which is 24 hours now. You can't go there without somebody outside asking you for things and doing that. So, you know, we spoke to Crete about it, constantly talking to Chief White about it. We have to do something. And if we are, CRDA with the Tourism District and hiring an extra class, two offices, whether it be on the Bull Walk, Atlantic and Pacific Avenue, we got to get it together. And like I said, it's not acceptable anywhere else but Atlantic City. And it's not right to the residents, and it's not right to the tourists and the people that come here. We spoke about, a couple weeks ago, I brought in a couple people down here from Patterson, New Jersey, who are real estate investors. One guy owns 500 rental properties, has another 100 that have developed. He goes in communities and he takes distressed properties and turn them into quality homes. So we had a tour with a bunch of city stakeholders, CRDA, and they're very interested because a lot of the problems is we have women houses that are out of control. The city, we're not in the real estate business, but we had to step up, you know, for public safety issues, find job out of the Police Department with Fox Man, and we had to shut that down. So there's a bunch of Fox Man is in town that if we can get a grip on it and turn it around and give our people here in the city of Atlantic City some nice quality housing, that's a win-win on everybody as well. We discussed the second ward at the old Atlantic City site for a second ward park, you know, some green space and some activities for children. So we'll be updating everyone there. And the last item that we talked about, which is narrowed to the people of Atlantic City, is a supermarket. I appointed Councilman Chabaz, since the proposed market is awarded, Councilman Randolph to represent counsel from the Administrative and Governmental Affairs Committee. They went to a meeting at CRDA. We are engaging to be a partnership between the city and CRDA, especially with the report of all the infant mortality rates and the health issues that people in the city of Atlantic City have, and a lot of it is contributed from not having a full-service supermarket. We know we all want to shop, right? We all want to act, but you can't make anybody invest with the supermarket profit margins being so low. So we are engaging, we have a consultant, we're engaging a competent operator to provide a full-service supermarket. So that's my report. And Paula, I want to go right to resolutions of recognition, and if we can bring up first number 590, I believe. Have a motion. Move. Move by Chabaz. Second by Marsh and Delgado.
This is a resolution to recognize Mikey Pittman for his outstanding accomplishments and achievements. Whereas Mikey Pittman of May's Landing, New Jersey, attended the Atlantic County Special Services School, and whereas, as a member of the Greater Egg Harbor School District, Mikey graduated in 2014, he was able to graduate with his younger sister, Essence Pittman, to the delight of their proud mom and biggest supporter, Angela Brooks Pittman. And whereas Mikey has participated in the Special Olympics for 15 years and earned numerous medals in hockey field and bowling, and whereas Mikey has overcome many challenges and obstacles while proudly reaching numerous milestones, and whereas Mikey is beloved throughout the community and continues to inspire and encourage all who have the pleasure to know this amazing young man, and whereas it is the desire of the Council of the City of Atlantic City to recognize Mikey Pittman for his outstanding accomplishments and achievements, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Atlantic City proudly commends Mikey Pittman and in his honor hereby designates Wednesday, October 24th, 2018, as Mikey Pittman Day in the City of Atlantic City. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontelroy?
Yes.
Hertz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative, and we have a presentation.
Is it all right if I say a few?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'd just like to thank Council, I'm a little nervous, for presenting this to my son. This is a young man that, at two months old, he was not supposed to be here. His stomach had ruptured, doctors told us to say, you know, our goodbyes to him because he wasn't going to make it. They had a special team come down to Atlantic City Medical Center and take him back to Cooper to try to save his life. They said the next 72 hours was critical, but it doesn't look good. He made it through. He was in a coma, he came out of the coma, he made it through. They said he wasn't going to walk, he wasn't going to do much or anything. This kid runs. He runs in the Special Olympics. He bowls. He does everything just like everybody else, and he just wants to be recognized and treated fairly, just like anyone else. So if you see a special needs person out in the community, you know, you don't have to stare, just say hi and, you know, let them know that they are people too. So I just want to thank you so much, Sydney, so much.
I just want to say, congratulations, Mikey. I had the pleasure, I don't know if it's a pleasure working with Angie. No, Angie and I, when I first graduated from college and I was in social casework in the welfare department, when the welfare department was in the city, she was my coworker, and Mikey was like a, you know, little kid. And when I tell you, you know, Angie is such an inspiration, you know, she always had us all supporting the things that Mikey was doing. I remember going out to her meet in Galloway to support him as a coworker. But she's a, not only for her son, she's a champion for all special needs kids. And when I saw that he was supposed to be honored and kind of got snubbed, got dressed up to go to an event, and his name wasn't even on the program, that touched my heart personally because I know how much, you know, she loves and cares for her son, and I know how much, you know, he means, and, you know, I thought it in our rivalry to honor one of our own longtime city employees.
31 years.
31 years.
34.
Oh, I'm sorry. But, you know, I thought that it would be the right thing for us to do to show our appreciation for you and all that you've been through in supporting your son. So we're just glad to have him here, and happy Mikey Pittman Day.
Thank you.
Is someone here from Public Works, is somebody controlling the heat? I don't know if it's the crowd, but it's, according to our little thermostat up there, 78 degrees here. What's wrong with your house? And Paula, next, I want to bring up to suspend the rules and bring up new business resolutions under resolution of recognition, 599. Bring it on in the doc. May I have a motion? Motion. Move by Marsh.
Second.
Second by Chabaz.
A resolution recognizing individuals and businesses for the renovations to Shellum Royal Field, home of the Atlantic City Dolphins. Whereas the Atlantic City Dolphins have been a source of pride for Atlantic City community and represent a positive athletic outlet for our youth, and whereas the Atlantic City Dolphin Clubhouse Field Locker Room and Concession Stand were in need of renovation and repair, whereas individuals and businesses selflessly gave of their time and resources to renovate various parts of the Atlantic City Dolphin Field, and whereas the City Council wishes to recognize those individuals and businesses for their generous contributions. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council for the City of Atlantic City recognizes the following individuals and businesses who provided services. City employees Krista Lewis, Assistant Director of Public Works, and Eric Forby from the Parks Department of Public Works, along with the various departments within the Public Works Department for their contributions to this effort. Hard Rock Hotel and Casino, purchase of the scoreboard. Robert Lee, Vice President of Community Affairs and Government Relations. Thomas Company, Inc., installed new roof and fascia trim, George Thomas. Weatherby Construction and Renovation Corps. Selective Demolition, replacing ceiling tiles and miscellaneous carpentry, Dennis Weatherby. Serignano Contracting, Inc., interior and exterior painting, Tom Serignano. Irishman's Overhead Door Company, repaired overhead corling doors, George McGee. Singer Food Service Equipment Company, donated food warmer and ice maker, Jim Gatch. Metropolitan Contract Carpets, installed new VCT tile and vinyl base, Karen Vasford. EEA Enterprises, Inc., erected the scoreboard, Eric Alvis. Joseph Jengoli and Son, Inc., Joe Jengoli, Michael Jengoli, Joe Jengoli, Dennis Monkitis, Dan Chafeli, and Edgewood Properties, Inc. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontelroy?
Yes.
Hertz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative.
City employees come up too, please. Can we hear from Chris, Krista, and Eric first, who did an outstanding job coordinating with all of these contractors and making sure that, you know, the city of Atlantic City had representation on the job? Ladies first, come on.
I just want to thank you, thank you very much for this honor. It's unexpected, but thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Can you, can you get the heat turned down now?
I'm working on it.
I want to thank Marty, he also had a big part in this. Jengoli, Hard Rock, Eric, my man Rob, I didn't hear my man Rob's name. Rob Lee, he was an integral part of this situation. What happened was, I worked for the City of Atlantic City Facilities Department. I called Marty up, I said, oh, there's a problem with the Dolphin Stadium. I'm a coach also, and we was in the process of just putting bandings on it. So Marty had a meeting with Joe, and Joe brought us over to the house, the clubhouse, and he saw how the clubhouse was, and everything on our whistlers Hard Rock gave us. So we appreciate you, thank you. And the Dolphin Organization, thank you for the cheerleaders to, you know, we already gave you a good who, Rob, but I want to thank you again for that. And we're doing great over there. Atlantic City Dolphins has a lot of good kids, and I know there's a lot of Dolphin, ex-Dolphins in here, and we've done great work, trying to do great work for them kids. So to have them with a beautiful field, what we already have, and now with a beautiful clubhouse, we appreciate it. Thank all of y'all.
What a fun project to be involved in. 20 years ago, the Dolphins Organization and the young people were the national champs, and the field house needed to be rebuilt. We were new to town, and an old friend of mine, Freeholder Corsi, it was Councilman Corsi, said, you know, how come the young people in Atlantic City, and how are we going to show the country when they come here? But it looked like so together, 20 years ago, we all worked together and rebuilt it. And 20 years later, there we were, Robert Lee, myself, Jack Marsh, Jim Allen. We had, you know, another project going on in town, the Hard Rock, and what better, what better thing to get involved in than the Dolphins Organization? Really, really great young men and women doing healthy activities and being ventured by their parents, by neighbors, and by other citizens of Atlantic City, all volunteering their time. And again, we got a shot, right? National champs, we could be again. So representing the Hard Rock, we were able to bring the Hard Rock scoreboard, which is a lot of... So representing the Hard Rock, we were able to bring the Hard Rock scoreboard, which was a lot of fun. Rebuild the field house again. I hope I'm here twenty years from now, so we can do it another time. But to sum it all up, one of the young men, when we were cutting the ribbon, asked me, he said, "How high does the home score go up?" So that shows how the young people of Atlantic City think and that we can all be involved with them is great. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanna add to a conversation Eric, that you and I had the day of the ribbon cut. And the conversation about, we got all this new scoreboard, we got the field house, we got everything, so how are we gonna secure it? So I told you when Hurricane Sandy came through, Nanny Kuzalom had promised to install a burglar alarm system. And I reminded them of that last Thursday and they will start next week. Also, they gave us a quote for cameras to go inside of the building, exterior cameras. CRDA on Monday agreed to take care of that, that will start as well next week. So you came forward somewhere.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Any more problems, wanna say anything?
Joe, I just wanna thank you and Hard Rock, Rob, you do a fabulous job with the community. Great guy you picked to do that community work. He's everywhere, everywhere we go, he's with the small stuff. I mean, you guys are great corporate partners. I mean, you set the bar really high for the rest of these casinos. We don't look at you like you're a corporation, we look at you like you're family. The way you hire these residents, you make them part. People that have made mistakes in their life, you give them second chances. You find value in everybody there and I wanna thank you personally for being a maker and not a taker out of this town like we've seen so many.
And tomorrow, we will give everyone that's mentioned on that list the proper gold City Council resolution. Your resolution was two pages, so we might downsize it a little bit to get it done. But we didn't want you guys to walk away empty handed. Not that you came here for that, but we wanted to show you how much we appreciate your efforts. And another thing too, Joe, you know, remember the challenge at the ribbon cutting? The kid said, "Well, we win the championship, can we have a banquet at Hard Rock?" They already saying, they saying, "Water plates up."
Absolutely.
All right.
Council President, let me just say real quick, I associate myself, everything with what Councilman Tivitt said. Hard Rock has set a new pattern for what corporate citizens can and should do in Atlantic City and I just wanna congratulate you.
I turned mine off. Press it down.
It's a conspiracy.
Nah, I turned mine off. Wait, only four mics can be on at once, so I turned mine off, I'm a team player.
I mean, honestly, it's not like I ever need one. In all, actually, I just wanted to add it to the fanfare. In addition to, I just wanted to say that it's exemplary to see the efforts that you've had outside of the casino district. The fact that you've been involved in so many projects outside of the casino industry, while still rolling the dice in the casino industry, you've brought a new type of compassion to the city that we haven't seen in so long. And it's very common. And we are a loving town, as you know. And we take care of our own, so we can't help but always appreciate all the work that you have. And we'll make sure to do what we possibly can to make everything as easy as possible for your stay while you're here, and we hoping that doesn't end anytime soon. And if there's anything that you need of us as a city, you already know you got us. You're in our hearts, you're part of our family, so we definitely appreciate it.
And for the sake of full transparency, it is now eighty-two degrees on the council thermostat. I'll give you an update in two.
Somebody's mad at us.
All right, now we can follow, to my colleagues, as we do every meeting, looking over the Resolution of Recognition list, I know the library's here. Is anyone here from Stockton?
No, I'm gonna take that.
Who's that? Are you here to represent? For Stockton?
No. This is President, I'm gonna take Stockton to the actual event.
Okay. And my care mentoring's here, is Reverend Day's here?
No, I'm gonna take that too for his.
All right. So I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion that we group Resolution five fifty-three and five eighty-nine. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Move by Shabazz. Second by Chang. We'll vote on those.
Resolution five fifty-three is a resolution to commend Stockton University for dedicating the Fannie Lou Caver Community Room. And Resolution five eighty-nine is a resolution to recognize Reverend Collins A. Day, Senior, on the blessed occasion of his twenty-fourth pastoral anniversary. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yeah.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative. We have Resolution five fifty-one. And this is a resolution recognizing the top readers in the 2018 Library Summer Reading Program.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second by Shabazz, second by Delgado.
Whereas the Atlantic City Free Public Library hosts the Summer Reading Program. Teen library volunteers are crucial to the success of the Summer Reading Program and work diligently to support literacy initiatives on behalf of Atlantic City youth. This program helps children and teens keep active minds and retain learning between school semesters while providing a safe and educational environment. And whereas the 2018 Summer Reading Program theme was Libraries Rock. Throughout the summer, the library offered a total of eighty-four programs, which were attended by three thousand eight hundred and five children, teens and parents. The program included a series of STEM workshops, crafts programs for children and teens, a Lego club literacy programs and a teen entrepreneur series. And whereas this summer, Atlantic City youth read a total of one thousand three hundred and one books. The readers were divided into three categories. Teen readers, age thirteen to eighteen. Independent juvenile readers, age seven to twelve. And emerging readers, up to age six. And whereas eleven readers have excelled, showing remarkable dedication, having read a combined total of five hundred and one books. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby recognizes and congratulates in the teen reading category Audrey Chavry, age thirteen, member of the library's teen advisory group for reading one hundred and ten books. Yawar Khan, age fifteen, for reading thirty-one books. And Alicia Jagnanan, age fifteen, member of the library's teen advisory group for reading thirty-six books. In the independent juvenile readers category, Inalise Valerio Dunn, age nine, for reading sixty-nine books. Eric Nguyen, age nine, for reading thirty-seven books. And Quadir Nguyen, age nine, for reading thirty-seven books. Sharia Nguyen, age eight, for reading thirty-seven books. And Tashin Mustafa, age ten, for reading twenty-two books. In the emerging readers category, Sachi Patel, age six, for reading sixty books with her parents. Pagwata Ismari, age five, for reading thirty-four books with her parents. And Valesco Zemina, age two, for reading twenty-eight books with her family. Being further resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City commends Anthony Cantonoso and William Cantonoso, owners of the Steel Pier Amusement Park, for their generous display of community spirit and for their sponsorship of the Atlantic City Free Public Library's End of Summer Reading Program Celebration at Steel Pier. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and we have a presentation.
Hi. Sachi? Congratulations. Good job. Audrey? Congratulations. Yawar? Congratulations. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Lafferty and I have the privilege of being the head of youth services at the Atlantic City Free Public Library. And I would also like to introduce our dedicated youth services staff, Neil Patel. Neil and Reggie worked tirelessly to make our library a very stimulating and fun place for children and teens to spend time. More than thirty-eight hundred children and teens attended our literacy enhanced programs or read books with us during the 2018 Summer Reading Program. So on behalf of the Atlantic City Library and our library director, Robert Inkovich, I thank you Mayor Gilliam and Atlantic City Council members for recognizing the reading achievements of our top summer readers. Thank you.
Let the record reflect, for full sake of transparency, it is now eighty-three degrees in the council. Maybe I should be a weatherman.
Yes, if I may, I'd like to add a little appreciation to the Atlantic City Free Public Library. Just recently, they've gone through quite a lot of budget reworkings and what have you because of the economy and things what have you. And then the issues that we have as far as center of city, how the library has become a haven for individuals who may not have a home, per se. They do an outstanding job with what they're doing. And the fact that the children, the staff members are the children that were once part of the program who continue to support the program speaks droves of how important that program is to our community. I love seeing our children read adorably with all the stories and opportunities they have through these stories because although their lives, their reality of their lives is limited, their minds aren't. And it opens up opportunities for their thinking and it gives them an opportunity or a pathway for them to possibly go out there and live life, a more abundant life, more exciting life, just by some of the words that they read. We have to keep supporting our children to reading. We sometimes rely on what we can find on these phones and often these phones sometimes become babysitters itself. When a book can supply that child with so much more. I am an advocate of hard rock books, I'm an advocate of libraries, I'm an advocate of our library. I love the library. Do what you can to help support this library and all the children. Help them learn to read more, encourage them to read more. In a world where a hundred and forty credits or a hundred and forty characters seems to be important to so many people, let us not forget the fantastic voyages in between the volumes of these books. Give them a chance.
Resolution five fifty-six is a resolution to honor and recognize In My Care Mentoring Program.
Move it.
Then you go put in the car before the voice again, may I have a motion?
I just wanted to make sure you go away.
Move by Shabazz. Second by Marsh.
Whereas Shalonda Austin, Executive Director of In My Care Mentoring Program, Inc., founded the mentoring program in 2014. The program focuses primarily on its acronym, CARE, Connecting Aligning Restoring and Empowering for Girls Ages Nine to Eighteen. Whereas young ladies participate in weekly activities and group sessions to improve their confidence and motivation. A learning environment is created which is valuable resource to young ladies, aspiring mentors and the community at large by way of our community awareness luncheons, youth expos, week-long etiquette workshops, banking workshops, girls' conference, community career nights, a true love waits ceremony and respect factor sessions. And whereas each week, a variety of other programs are offered such as a book club, movie nights, guest speakers and planned dinners. And whereas the annual Black Girls Rock Jersey Style was modeled after the television ceremony using local heroes. This is very important for the young ladies as they get to hear and see from women who have overcome obstacles but persevered to obtain their goals. Whereas the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby wishes to congratulate Shalonda Austin and the following honorees. Dr. Aquetta Small, Dr. Hope Gallagher, Kalisha Bridgers, Pamela Williams, First Lady, Dr. Alicia Odom, Nynell Langford, Kyla Sykes, Anell Lewis, Beth Beal Williams, Zamira Luna and Deborah Odnum. The 2018 Shiro Award, Angela Burton. And the In My Care Mentoring Program, Inc., Shalonda Austin, Yvonne Sutton, Jasmine Moore, Tamika Young, Maria Hadley, Sherri Terrell, Chiquita Thomas, Maria Liz Barnes, Deborah Brown, Nikea Neal, Stephanie Marshall and Adrienne Moss. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council hereby encourages the In My Care Mentoring Program to continue the confidence building as they experience the Fourth Annual Black Girls Rock Jersey Style Program. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph? I'm sorry, Shabazz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and we have a presentation.
Hi.
Ms. Austin, if everybody can spread out, see, it's about it. And let the record reflect, it's now eighty-four degrees. Can we, so everybody can be seen?
Would you like me to just... Ms. Austin, would you like me to just give them to you or hand them out individually?
Turn the face up, but something going to the left?
No, it's just, just one resolution for it all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
We need a spokesperson, I don't know if I speak English.
Thank you. I just, I just wanna take the opportunity to thank the City of Atlantic City. I would like to thank the women who donate their time every week to come and mentor our young ladies. I'd like to thank the honorees of Black Girls Rock for giving us a platform whereby young ladies can see that we have local heroes in our own town that are doing things and we can aspire to be better and greater. We don't always have to have friction and be ratchet. We can grow up to be what we wanna be because we see women that did it. I also would like to thank the In My Care Mentoring Team for being able to, we just partnered with the City of Camden, so now we have a building in Camden where In My Care will be spreading their love to other cities, starting with Camden. So I thank everybody, I thank everybody who called and prayed for us, sent a donation, asked how we were doing. We love our youth and we want our youth to come back and build in Atlantic City. We want to keep them there. So I thank you all for strengthening our young ladies, everybody out in the audience, everybody here. Thank you for strengthening our young ladies, thank you for strengthening us, thank you for strengthening me. Thank you.
I just wanna say something to a lot of the people who attend the council meetings or watch the meetings. or watch the meetings online, et cetera. I want to commend the gentleman to my left and right, excuse me, because these were one of the organizations that we fought diligently for to receive those funds, for MGM to be able to expand their horizons now, you know, going into the city of Camden and everywhere else. And just to see, I happen to be at the ceremony as well. My wife got honored, she has another engagement tonight, so I'm going to accept the award on her behalf. But I see two young women out, I'm gonna put them on the spot because, you know, amongst all of these giants in the communities with the adults, we have two, two young ones here. And I know one personally because she was one of my star student athletes when I ran the after-school sports program for the Atlantic City School District. So if we can hear from those two since, you know, everything tonight has been about the youth and, you know, everybody being, don't be shy. You know how to walk that runway, don't you?
Yes.
Come to the mic.
I want to thank you for acknowledging not just me, but everybody else who participated in Black Girls Rock.
Well, thank you for this wonderful award and I could not be more grateful. And, um, no matter how young you are, you can achieve your dreams and just believe in yourself and you can do whatever you want.
And, and you're ten years old, right?
Yes.
South Stand, my daughter's ten. Good job, way to represent for the ten year olds. Anyone else want to speak? Speak now, forever hold your peace.
I just want to thank you, Shalonda, so much for this award. I was not able to attend due to the death of my husband, Bishop William Odenman, Sr. You were very understanding and you sent your prayers and support. And I just want to publicly thank you and I will be making a donation to your cause. God bless you.
And we said it that night, but on behalf of City Council, we give you our heartfelt condolences to you and your family and you'll continue to be strong every day.
Thank you.
You know, I love you, that's my cousin right there. I want to thank you so very much for surprising me. Like everyone knew I was running around trying to find something for cancer to wear, but someone came past my job and said, "Angela, you have to wear pink tonight." I walked in, I didn't know what was going to happen, and they literally made me cry. And I try to be strong around everyone, but I'm human. And I want to thank you so much for giving me this, this second award from the council and from you. Because I didn't even know I rocked till y'all told me. Thank you and may God continue to bless you all.
I just want to say one more thing. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge my husband, who always is in my corner, always supporting, always there. I don't, he's the cameraman tonight, but I just want to say thank you tonight. And I want to say thank you to each of you guys for supporting us and being there for us. Thank you. She want me to let you know that my hus- my husband's on her CD.
Okay. We are now in public.
And just, just, just a quick announcement. And with all meetings in the back, before the meetings, we neglected to mention, and at this time, I would like to do it now, as you know, the City of Atlantic City lost a giant in Sonny Lee, Sonny's Barbershop. And at this time, his services are Friday at Boardwalk Hall. So at this time, I want to ask if we can give him the proper moment of silence. Thank you.
Okay. We are now in comment.
Mark, you want to do five ninety-seven, Mr. President? That's Sonny's resignation.
We want to take that to the phone.
Okay.
Okay, so we are at public comment, agenda items and good and welfare. Jackie Wolf?
Good evening. It's a little hard to follow a very productive, successful, and celebratory meeting. However, I represent a group of Atlantic City, a large group of Atlantic City residents who are singles, families, children, couples, taxpayers, and public servants. We have a problem and we've tried to resolve it by sending letters, by the police department, by meeting with the culprit, the culprit individually who promised to resolve matter. Unfortunately, few of us are here to represent and advise you guys what's going on because the restaurants fear for their safety, their health, and their quality of life. And I would believe that they couldn't have already reached you, but we need to talk about the Choice Bar in Chelsea Heights. It was approved without a parking lot, which meant that not only were all these people parking in residential areas that are only supposed to be three-hour parking, but what's been happening is they sit in their cars, they drink their beer, they drink their bottles of liquor, they smoke their joints, and then they come out and they break the bottles, leave them, upset the neighborhood. The other major problem is the noise. They play bands or music until four a.m. Residents as far as seven blocks away who are here today are affected. And personally, since I am a Chelsea Heights resident, I fear that there's going to be a major incident, safety incident there. Because when I went to speak to the owner and there were people dancing in the fire exit, and then I went last night to try to approach the owner one more time before we came here, there were pool tables blocking the fire exit. And that's a real problem. We in Chelsea Heights have a major problem that needs to be addressed, both the noise till four a.m., the problem with what's happening to the neighborhood. And there are a few people, we try to be professional and not have everybody come and take over the room, but a few of us speak and advise you of the problems and how we feel, and we beg your assistance to help us to rid these problems before something serious happens that could involve people's lives. Thank you.
Barb Marple?
Hi, my name is Barb Marple. I live at five six six Trenton Avenue in Chelsea Heights. I'm a little nervous in public speaking, so please bear with me.
Take your time.
My, my issue with, like Jackie, is with the Choice Bar. I live a couple blocks away and the music that comes out of there, I've been woken up in the middle of the night several times from the music. And to where, I, for me, it's health issues when I hear that, when that bass is coming down the street like that, I get, it causes me anxiety. I get migraine headaches that last hours to days. Like Jackie said, we have gone down and talked and spoken with the owner of the bar. We have all met with our councilmen at the bar with the owner to voice our concerns. And he swore it wasn't going to happen again. The very next night, there was a blown-out party, people all over playing music, smoking pot. We had the cops there. They keep saying they need to, they need to use a decibel machine to do that. There was nobody, their decibel machine wasn't calibrated at that night for them to do it. But it, it's affecting quality of life. You know, I can't get up and go to work and concentrate on my job the next day when I'm up all night arguing with the bar trying to get the music turned down. I've had to cancel plans on, on weekends because I've been so tired and the migraine headaches last so long. And it affects, you know, that no sleep, anxiety and all that affects your long-term health as well. So we would really like our voices to be heard and something to be looked into and done about this because we are a good, long-term Chelsea Heights resident. And this bar has been here now, I think, five or six months, and we've had nothing but problems with the music. The music is just ungodly in the middle of the night. So we really need our voices to be heard and something to be done about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Swate?
So it's Bobby five fourteen, we're Trenton. I want to thank Jimmy for really trying to alleviate some of the problems here. He's been, next time I call him, he answers his phone, he comes out. He's been, he was out at my house the other night, eleven-thirty. He's been out there three o'clock in the morning. I think George has been by there three o'clock in the morning from what I understand. So you guys know what's going on here. I don't have to reiterate what they just said. I gave you two, three stories. The gentleman behind me, actually behind the tiki bar, which is illegal, it's illegal. He built a tiki bar without permission. Doesn't use it, some people said he does use it, I haven't seen it being used much. He has two little kids, they can't sleep at night. He can't be here tonight, some people can't be here tonight because of whatever reason or another. My wife went to bed the other night with earplugs. You know, anybody wearing that earplug, if we're in bed, it's uncomfortable. It's, it's somebody, and three weeks ago, a woman whose son was taking his SATs the next morning. Probably know about George, he had to cancel his SATs because he could not sleep all night because outside on Filbert Avenue, there was loud talking, fighting. This is getting ridiculous now. We thought this was going to be a restaurant and a bar. It's turning into a club where they're playing, and the guy took, we had a meeting with the guy and he said he was going to turn it out, but he's pretty arrogant. And he said, "I'm going to do what I want to do." Now, he said he was going to fix it, but he's not there all the time. So we just need your help. Jimmy, you're doing a great job. I mean, you can't do much more. I mean, I appreciate it. But we had a nice squad here, but it was, it was quiet, it was peaceful. And now it's like, what we get here? So if they're not fully licensed, which I believe they're not, they don't have all their licenses, you guys better put a stop to them. And I don't want to see any business in this town not work because certainly we need the revenue and we want to see everybody be successful because we're all in this together. But you better put your foot down with these guys and control them. It was something like what Jackie said, you know, something's going to happen. There was a woman on Wisteria who, same, I think, two weeks ago, she got into a fight with people who came out of there, well, Park and Harrisburg, and she just asked, "Could you guys be quiet? We're trying to sleep." And of course, you know what happened, her husband had to pull her inside because he was afraid for her life. So you guys know the situation here. We asking for your help. And Jimmy, again, once again, Jimmy, appreciate it, thank you.
Charles Goodman?
Excuse me, you already spoke, yes, no one can speak to us. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I know I'm out of gear. Mr. Shabaz said that to be more impactful, impactful, I need to start wearing suits and ties. So he lent me one of his suits today. Okay. I'm going to stop my time.
Man, you know, you always telling people when we start the time, man.
I thought I had the intro. You're taking my time, Mr. President. As far as the needle exchange program, we realize the importance and the need of it, but we also realize the importance of not having it in the central part of our city, in the middle of the tourist district, in the middle of where the restaurant is, in the middle of so much of that we depend on the tourists to walk down. Again, I have to reiterate your words, Mr. President. This city's not going to be first-class at anything till we clean up that infrastructure, which is Pacific and Atlantic Avenue. Paving it is one part, but knocking it down. I can tell you so many, I've researched the cities smaller than us that have done a better job in turning things around, larger than us. I remember when Forty Second Street was terrible in New York, it's larger than us. So it can't be because of our size. The other thing, Creeder giving you, donating the cameras for Pacific Avenue. Great, great. When are they going to donate for the infrastructure to put up cameras in the neighborhoods? Again, all this money goes to the tourist district, which is still Atlantic City, which they created two Atlantic Cities, the tourist district and the City of Atlantic City. It seems like they're two different worlds. It shouldn't be. Fight for the infrastructure to be put in place to put cameras on the north side. Okay? The other thing, I understand that shortly the fire department will be hiring. I asked for a resolution from the council people that there be a designated recruiter so they can recruit from the citizens of Atlantic City, the young citizens of Atlantic City, and go into our schools and specifically earmark our kids to be firefighters. We need local recruitment for our firefighters to come out. Okay? Also, I've been asking in terms of the, it's coming up on the year for the sanitation contract. I need somebody to, to put together the dollars amount to see how much we save, whether it was what they said we were going to save. And we also know the history of privatization. The first year, they usually try to save a few dollars, second year even, and after that, they take all they can get. So I'd like somebody to report that. One other thing, on the boardwalks, those trams, I know you get money back for that. Is there a set aside for the boards that they mess up and our city workers do have to pay, have to be up there fixing the boards that they break up that cause you suits because people fall? So, but you get the pennies that you get from their contract. Is there any, I don't know when that date ends for that to be checked out. Again, I'm gonna put a resolution to ask at least my time be increased.
You hit some good points. Just, just, just to bring up a couple of points, I happened to be in a meeting with Mr. Goodman and John Borello of the Fire Union, and we talked about the fire department designating a recruiter when opportunities come up to give Atlantic City residents, residents an opportunity. We also talked about possibly creating like an explore program for firefighters. One of the issues that I brought up months ago that we're still vetting is the possibility of Class Two firefighters, you know, during this time of need. So that is being worked on in the next meeting, we will bring up a resolution, it'll be on the agenda. Monica, can you make a note of that? Put on the agenda, yes. And secondly, when we spoke about the point about the boardwalk, we all know the issues with the boardwalk, the trams have done a lot of damage. That's something that we'll have to look at in the next round of contracts, but in the meantime, there was a grant about one point seven million dollars years ago that was given to the city from CRDA, and I believe it's about sixty-one thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-four cents left in that account to replenish wood. And as I stated, we meet with the CRDA every month and we'll have an agenda item on our next monthly meeting with them to talk about how to replenish those funds to keep the boardwalk, you know, looking up to speed.
Council President, I believe in the contract with the trams, there is clauses in there about the damage that they're doing to the boardwalk. I said it from day one and I said it when we had to go, when we did the trial period. The boardwalks were popping up, and somebody asked me if I was an engineer, and I don't have to be an engineer to see those tires popping that wood up. That's why we got rid of the trams years ago. It's causing hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage. When that wood pops up and you go to put a screw back in it, you start tearing up the main joint under there. And we're going to get stuck with that while somebody else is getting rich. And we have to do something about it before too long. And you don't have to wait for the contract to be up. If we have our engineers say that it is causing the damage and our boardwalk guys are actually doing the work and know that boardwalk, see the damage it's committing, you don't have to wait to the end of the contract. We could end it immediately, especially the liability that it's causing. And thank God we've got, you know, one hand, thank God we got cameras up there, on the other hand, we lose every suit with those cameras seeing people. On the other hand, we lose every suit with those cameras seeing people trip on that wood and seeing that it's not a fake case. So, it's not something that we have to wait until more damage is done, if anybody has the stomach to move forward and, uh, look to end this if it's really doing the damage that all the experts are saying it is.
Point, point well taken. And, um, let, let the record reflect, it is now 81 degrees, so good job.
Mr. President, if, if I could, could, uh, we ask the, um, engineers at our next meeting to give us a report on, uh, the condition of the boardwalk and, and, uh, issue that, uh, my colleague and our colleague from the public, Mr. Goodman brought up.
Yes.
Council President, if, I mean, I'd like to add also, um, we should start to emphasize a little bit more dialogue with the CRDA with regards to the boardwalk. Uh, because of all the casinos that are adjacent to the boardwalk itself, that depend on the boardwalk for travel, um, who also facilitate events and things that would have you on the boardwalk itself. I think they need to have a better obligation, a larger obligation to try to maintain that thoroughfare. Um, if I'm not mistaken, if my, uh, recollection, uh, is proper, uh, Pacific Avenue was funded to be resurfaced somewhat from funds coming from CRDA and the state. And if that's the case, that's one side of the facility, let's work on the other side of the facility. Was to say they couldn't help to resurface the boardwalk itself, or to be placed on, on the residence per se, because casinos unnecessarily, um, they don't pay a certain share of obligated funds the way the residents do now because of the way the formulas have been set up. I think it's just, uh, just, it's justice. If we mandate our residents to take care of their own properties, we should mandate the casino industry to take care of their properties and surrounding areas, including the boardwalk.
Point well taken. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Carol Harney. I'm the executive director of South Jersey AIDS Alliance. We are the organization that raises syringe access, the needle exchange program here in Atlantic City. And we're here just tonight to talk about the fact that changing the ordinance, we, we are opposed to making it the change to the ordinance. Even the fact of tonight, I believe it was changed from not having syringe access at all in the city, it was changed to having a mobile unit. We believe that that is dramatically less effective and is not, not very good for our clients. Will provide so much less service on a mobile unit than a fixed site. And we are here to oppose both, eh, any of those changes to, to the ordinance. And, uh, back in 2004, the city of Atlantic City was the original people to establish the syringe access program. It was very heavily supported by the city health department, and it was led by Health Officer Ron Cash. In fact, it was the health officer who, who believed in this program so strongly that it was him, it was he who had, um, got this program started. South Jersey AIDS Alliance worked in a partnership with the city, and the health department reported, the health department employees used to come to the AIDS Alliance office so that they would help distribute syringes. This was a city program. But what happened as time went on is the, the city health department disbanded. So, it left South Jersey AIDS Alliance picking up the, the pieces of all the HIV work in the city. And we continue to do that today. While Atlantic City has made strides in reducing the new infections among injection drug users, Atlantic City is still considered one of the top 10 cities in New Jersey that has high rates of people that have HIV. Currently, there are 650 people that are Atlantic City residents that are infected with HIV. And that's why the syringe access program is so important. It, our, our role in the community is to prevent infection. And when you have people in a community that have that infection, spreading that infection is obviously, um, more likely. But, but when we look at those numbers, there is no other city, um, no, no other city in Atlantic County, Cape May County, Cumberland County, that has a high concentration of people who are HIV-positive as Atlantic City. You know, one of the things that we hear all the time is that, that people say that people are coming into Atlantic City to, to get syringes. And Atlantic City's tourism, it... Can I have another minute, please? This is such an important issue.
I, I understand, and as a matter of fact, I mean, I believe the gentleman is here, he walked in the meeting with me, and, uh, he criticized me last meeting about being a little lenient. I gave everybody extra time last minute, last meeting. So, he said, "Usually, when the buzzer sounds, you cut people off." And I just want to let you know for the record again, and for the sake of transparency, it used to be a two-minute time limit, and then my colleagues overruled me. So, for the sake of sticking to it, um, you want to...
Okay, we just want to say that we really oppose the change to the law. And South Jersey AIDS Alliance is more than willing to move our offices out of the tourism district. And we think that is the solution to the problem and not changing the, um, ordinance. Thank you.
Council President, um, we just want to respond to something that you said. The very large number of people infected with AIDS that live in the city of Atlantic City. Understand something, of course, we have the highest numbers around because everybody dumps their problems here in Atlantic City. Our children can't walk the streets, our children can't walk the boardwalk, our kids can't have to worry about being in the neighborhoods. Because everybody throughout the state, the region, the county, send everybody here, like, we're the ones to take care of everybody's problem. Everybody has to help and do their fair share, not dumping on Atlantic City. To where our children can't go to the public library by themselves, they can't walk from home and go to the public library because of what they might en- encounter at the library. It's terrible over Atlantic City, the needles, all over the streets, the gardeners that go reaching the flower boxes, cleaning professional businesses, and grabbing needles out of those flower boxes. Something's got to be done. It can't continue to be put on the people of Atlantic City. We are a tourist town, and we are a family town. And I'm sick and tired of knowing that when I was a child, I could walk anywhere in town. I would never let my kid walk down Pacific Avenue, I would never let him walk uptown by New York Tennessee Avenue right now with what's taking place. And it's all because we're sending Megan's List people here. Too many reentry people that their own towns don't want them. We'll take care of our own that get into trouble when they come back. But this town has been a dumping ground, and the state's very involved in letting it happen. You keep sending people here and paying these rooming houses to, to, for people to live in them that are in, in drugs, Megan's List, you name the type of people they are, and it's destroying this city. It's not the good people of Atlantic City. And I'm sorry if I get upset, but don't make it like the people of Atlantic City are bad people, and like, they have high rates of, uh, AIDS. No, it's a lot of people that are sent to this city, and our numbers go up, so...
You know, I just wanted, I just, I just want to say this, uh, as well. I've been beating this Pacific and Atlantic Avenue drum for like three years. And, uh, the, the problems that we had were so-called Greyhound therapy. And I want to say this, listen, people fall on tough times, whether it's needles dealing with HIV, or if it's needles, uh, dealing with the drug epidemic. And we've, this body has, has tried to address it. We engaged a lawyer shortly after the beginning of the year. We still waiting for the signature, uh, from the mayor's office. It even went up to the Attorney General's office. Where we can have someone who would aggressively sue these pharmaceutical companies, um, and try to stop this epidemic. We know it's a problem, and we understand that. But, the last time I checked, our neighboring towns, Pleasantville, Ventnor, Margate, Longport, there's no discussions of, quote, bringing needle exchanges there. They wouldn't want it. And that was my first year on city council in 2004. We were a part of the group, I believe myself and Councilman Marsh were here to support it. But things and times change. Situations change. 2004, Pacific and Atlantic Avenue wasn't looking like that, I guarantee you that. And I wanted to save it for this portion of the meeting. One of the items that we've also, we also discussed amongst the administrative and governmental affairs committee meeting at Crete on Monday, was, where do we go from here? We were told that you guys were working with that real estate department and CRDA, and a lot of the locations that were proposed, quote, "You didn't want to go there." So, we brought up the idea of a mobile unit. Where, once or twice a week, in Atlantic City, every other day, and some other part of the county.
That's right.
If everybody want to criticize Atlantic City for, quote, "Being the problems of everybody's taxes when our budget is out of control, and, and they have to pay extra on their fair share because of us," spread the love back. The health department is within the county. So, this is a county problem now. The city of Atlantic City has more than stepped up. We made that bold move. I remember the meeting like it was yesterday. I used to sit right there, when we made that vote. So, now it's time for the neighboring towns to let that mobile unit come sit wherever they, wherever they wanted in their town. We're not saying get rid of it, we know we have problems. Jim Johnson's report showed us that, but that's something that we knew anyway. But what do we do? As my colleague said, a dumping ground. Why does everything have to be Atlantic City? So, let that mobile unit, which by the way, CRDA said that we can put on the record, they said they will purchase it. And then they said about private space, we had a, a, a health mobile van for the city for years. It's, it's large enough to have breakout rooms for consultations, you know, privacy and other things. So, CRDA is willing to do that, how come you guys aren't willing to move to a mobile unit? Which we support. As you said, to show how sensitive we were, and I have to give kudos and credit to my colleague, Councilman Randolph, who definitely pushed the fact that we need to put the language in there that it's a mobile unit. One or two days in Atlantic City, pick whatever you want to do, whatever of a town, the rest of the town. So, that's what we are, this is what we trying to do, to be progressive again in supporting this initiative. Move the agenda.
Council President?
Council President?
I'd like to pause. Um, I'm, I'm in support of the program, but I'm also in support of revamping the program so it's more effective. The program that worked in the city of Atlantic City was a less-than-stellar program because of the lack of resources that were once available. But the team that was, um, appointed to that program broke their necks to do the best they could for everyone that was included in that program. They did, they had to create new, uh, types of incentives to try to get people to come in. My, my, my wife worked for that program. She worked in HIV. She went out in the streets, walked and spoke with people, didn't just sit in office. She was part of the, the team that went out looking for these individuals who were potentially at risk, at high risk. She was part of the team to help eradicate or lower some of the numbers as far as the city's concerned in our age. Some of you may remember my wife, when she's been over to Oasis, when they were doing the, the, the blood, uh, and taking and, and evaluating the blood, which is HIV in the, in the clinic itself. The nurses that worked there really worked tirelessly. But unfortunately, it came to a point in time where it was sliced because the state didn't see the support system there was. Until it hit home. When their families got affected, then there's an issue. The truth of the matter is that this is a lot larger. Our issues is that we have zombies in our city. We have individuals that are dependent on drugs instead of coping in life using regular coping skills. It's unfortunate. Our economy does not support our needs right now. And too often, people come from out of town, driving directly in our neighborhoods, looking for these drugs. We could be walking, I live right off of Kentucky Avenue, walking my dog, and every night I hear somebody come by, "Yo, you got anything?" And these individuals who don't look like me. They come into my town looking for drugs. Drugs are a major issue. The fact that needles have been a conduit for a, a drug that also brings HIV and hepatitis C was one remedy to trying to save lives. But the underlying issue is our society's messed up, we don't know how to cope. We are not coping properly. Then we get super sensitive, "Oh, my God, how can you take away this opportunity?" We need to backtrack and find better, stronger solutions, get really adamant in trying to help these individuals recover. The individuals that worked for the city of Atlantic City's health department helped to redevelop the individual, the human being, not just the data. Finding jobs, rehabilitating them, trying to relocate homes for them, making sure that they ate, following up with their children, generational. They did an awesome job. If this is being mimicked, it ought to, I applaud you. South Jersey AIDS Alliance, I know the kind of work that you do for the, 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 the group of individuals that call it home. I know it's an, it's an irreplaceable position. It's an irreplaceable source. But we need to do better. Because as long as we have people who are dependent on the drugs, who are lost walking through our streets, that create, perpetuate this fear, that perpetuate this sense of lost, for lack of better terms, our city is not going to meet its potential the way it needs to. Our businesses need to have, need to be free from zombies standing out front. Our businesses need to be free from these young people thinking that that's the business options that they have for themselves instead of going to school. If we have more jobs, maybe some people would work. If our education system was stronger, maybe something would work. Maybe if our families were a little stronger and tight fit as a unit, maybe it would work. I don't know. But this is a problem, it's a lot larger, a lot more encompassing. So, we can have this animus about what we think is wrong, but until we start pointing fingers ourselves and say we're also part of the problem. Because we'd like to exclude others. It's not your problem, it's my problem. Or no, it's not your prob, it's not my problem, it's your problem. We go through debates consistently. Atlantic City is only 48 blocks by 16, at the most. Anything that affects one affects the other. But we choose to exclude our pain and our suffering. No one wants to assume that there's family members that are on drugs. No one wants to assume and appropriate the love and affection to the family members that may be dying of AIDS or fighting. No one's proud enough to say, "I have it." I do. I've lost family members. I know the struggle. But we can't keep talking about we're working to find solutions if we're not. If we're not finding solutions the way you were, then damn us all, because we need to. We're all crying wolf, "Oh, my God, everyone's wrong, oh, shame on you for treating us badly, from budget cuts, oh, I can't live the life I want to, I'm sorry." Life is not that sweet, sorry, life is real. But the individuals that we can help, that is what we're supposed to do. Help. Not administering programs if somebody else can help. Help. If it takes someone to come in and collaborate with other people, that's what you do. Don't just assume that you want to sit on top of the pinnacle of responsibility on the mountain and say, "I'm going to disseminate everything to you because I think it'll help." We need to lower that standard, and we need to all get involved in this whole situation, because it's a lot larger. It's a lot larger. Our children shouldn't have to live in fear. Our seniors shouldn't have to live in fear. We shouldn't have so many homeless individuals living in the city of Atlantic City. The opulence that we has is a disgrace. We have such an amazing first-world facade with a third-world reality, we don't take our own. We were feeding on the fact that we had a, a soup kitchen per se, blocks away from the casino, and people were fighting that, they were feeding people. Is or is it not part of the caveats of some of our religions, to feed those that need it? But it came to an expense, "Oh, you're taking out my pocket, I'm sorry you couldn't buy that second home." We got to stop thinking that we can't do this. We got to stop thinking that we, that pain is exclusive of our own, that you're carrying a burden, I'm sorry. It's not. And I applaud my council colleagues for doing or trying to see what we can do to do something different. And I applaud every, every individual in the industry trying to do what they can to help every person. But we got to do better. This ain't an end-all, be-all, you just have to adjust. This is not saying it's the end, it's cut, it just says you have to do differently. So, if we have mobile units... So if you have mobile units, go out there and advertise. Go talk to these individuals. Help bring them to the mobile units. Bring those mobile units in a comfortable surroundings in Lindenwood and Margate and what have you, where a lot of the majority of their children are being flooded into Atlantic City. So we have to deal with the issues. Because they don't want to face their own realities that drugs have invaded in their homes. And in their streets. It's about sharing the responsibility. This is an opportunity to share responsibility and sharing in the solution. It doesn't mean it's over. It just means we have to do it differently. So I challenge you, let's do it differently. Let's do it better. I applaud everybody that's in the fight, but we got work to do.
This is President, if I can, very briefly. Three things. This is very emotional issue and obviously everybody is concerned at different levels. The first thing, factual thing about South Jersey. The city of Kansas had a needle exchange program. They closed it. The city of Millville had a needle exchange program. They closed it. The only needle exchange program in South Jersey is in Atlantic City. Those are factual statements. I guess I'm dating myself, but I was the chair of the institutional review board when Johnny Brooks was alive. And during that time, as my colleague said, the language of the drug fight was focused on people of color in urban areas. Now that language has changed. Now we're saying that if you have a drug problem, it's a health crisis. And it is a health crisis. But it was a health crisis twenty years ago. It was a health crisis twenty-five years ago. It was a health crisis when the focus of drugs was in poor and urban areas and people of color. And I hate to use that language, but that's factual. I think what we have to do now, as my colleague said, we have to change. We have to change the language. The drug problem, as Councilman Tippett says, is not just in Atlantic City. If the only people who use drugs had HIV, lived in Atlantic City, we would be responsible to take care of it and take the burden. The reality of it is, as I talked to a county official who called me and said, "Kaleem, I'm going past Brown's Park and I see somebody selling drugs." I told that official, who lives outside of Atlantic City, "If I came to your town, there's somebody selling and using drugs now in your town." The drug problem is not only a county, regional, national problem. It's a crisis that we all have to take part in it. It's unfair that Atlantic City has to take all of the weight of that problem. I go to community meetings in my district and people say, "Councilman Shabazz, why is everything that has a negative impact in Atlantic City and people in other areas don't have that responsibility and they have part of the problem?" So I think we have to have a new paradigm and a new language. Atlantic City can no longer accept all of the burdens of the negative social entities. The people who live in Atlantic City, the taxpayers, the people who don't pay taxes, the residents, they deserve the same quality of life as people who live in any other neighborhood. And I think that this council is saying that, everybody else can speak for themselves. But I think we are saying that no longer can Atlantic City have to accept all of the burdens, all of the negative. And other people who do well, the AIDS Alliance does absolutely good work. But everyone else has to take a part of this burden. And I think we have to say that. Again, I support Councilman Kurtz and his ordinance. The mobile unit, I was in the meeting, CRDA is saying they want to do that. Our neighboring community official said, "We don't want a needle exchange." And that community's inventing. And he has a right to say that. But by the same token, we have a right to say that we want our residents in Atlantic City to have the same quality of life that he wants for his residents. So we have to work together. And we can't, it's time out for Atlantic City taking all of the burden and everybody else say, "Well, it's Atlantic City. That time is over." It's 2018 going into 2019. We have to have a new perspective, a new outlook, a new approach.
Rosalind Preston.
Good evening, Honorable Councilmen. Thank you very much for your feedback and some of the words that you've shared. I'd like to present to you some information that I think Atlantic City needs to consider. I'm a licensed social worker and I'm an advocate for vulnerable populations in New Jersey. And I stand here tonight to remind you, as some of you have already said, that Atlantic City and the rest of New Jersey and the rest of this nation is in the midst of an opioid crisis that is changing the landscape of our communities. In 2017, three thousand New Jerseians, not just Atlantic City, but New Jerseians, died from drug overdose. And one point that I want you to understand and be very clear is that the increase of hepatitis C and HIV infections are residual effect of increased opioid drug use. Okay? Understand that. So we cannot be like other cities in this country and stand back and say, "Not us." Right? We cannot say that. Fears of an opioid-driven HIV outbreak are real. Cities that have not actively and aggressively engaged within their city, their residents who are intervenant drug users must be aware of the potential consequences. Cities like Austin, Indiana, Lawrence, Massachusetts, Baltimore, Maryland, they all know too well the devastating impacts of not helping their residents who inject. And Atlantic City has residents who inject as well. As they have experienced health crisis like alarming increasing rates of hepatitis and HIV rates. In some cities, they went from forty-nine new HIV cases per year to an astounding hundred and twenty-nine new cases of HIV per year. And Austin reached two hundred new cases of HIV. Reports of syringes being reused and shared hundreds of times per day. Newly diagnosed HIV patients in their cities with record-high amounts of HIV in their blood. Increased crime, increased prostitution. And when the world laid eyes on these communities that were plagued by these HIV outbreaks that occurred and the extensive news media coverage that named these cities, they said shame on them. Newspaper articles across the country daily reported that there was a lack of response for these cities and the overall sentiment was, "Why didn't they do something in that city to help those residents?" They said shame on them for allowing an HIV outbreak that was inevitable in this opioid crisis. Please understand that if you Google today, cities like Austin, Indiana, Lawrence, Massachusetts, right now, you'll see articles.
Three minutes.
Okay.
And just briefly. You made a statement regarding people that inject drugs and things like that. And you made a statement that cities that don't look after their people are cities that, you know, should be ashamed of themselves. We started it. And we don't have any reason not to continue it. Maybe in a different way. But we'll look out for our people. We just wish the communities around us do the same. Okay? Thank you.
Mike Nies.
President, Council. I'm Mike Nies, Iowa Avenue. I've lived in Atlantic City my entire adult life. First, I work as a case manager for the South Jersey AIDS Alliance. I feel like because of this vantage point, it's important that I speak to the caveats that have been made today. First, to the point that if we somehow create barriers to our syringe exchange, that we are going to somehow cause surrounding affluent white suburbs to create syringe exchanges as a result is painfully naive. And it's a shell game that will cost our residents their health. No one seems to deny the powerful role that this program can play in sharply reducing the amount of HIV transmission in our city. Everyone knows that there are people every day that are avoiding an HIV diagnosis and we all know what that means because of this program. Nobody seems to be able to say with a straight face that the problem is somehow lessened. Of course, we're in a historic crisis. This is something, this is a once-in-a-century storm, something we haven't seen in many decades. I urge anyone who finds this idea that the justification is somehow that our syringe exchange is what is contributing to Atlantic City's problems, to consider this logically. Anyone who finds this persuasive, to take a step back. Consider all the elements in play in Atlantic City. All the enterprises on and off the books. And we are supposed to believe that our clean syringe exchange program is the deciding factor in somebody coming here. We're supposed to believe that you can look out there and find one of these supposed faceless migrants on the street and they're going to tell you, "Oh yeah, I was going to go to some other town, but Atlantic City has the clean syringe exchange, so that's why I loiter around here." This is nonsense. This is ignorance to public health. And council needs to keep its head in the game. These six hundred and fifty diagnoses are our loved ones, our neighbors. These are people who are trying to do the right thing even when there is no hope, even when they are in the throes of addiction to trying to avoid transmitting to a loved one or to avoid getting it themselves so that they might someday be able to contribute to our society again. The idea that somehow there has been research done about this is just laughable. I defy anyone to find a public health expert who thinks that if we have a moving target going around the city, two days a week stopping in different places, that we're somehow going to save as many lives as we do right now. This is not how it works. We're out here trying to keep a deadly virus in our community pinned. And we cannot be so naive as to the nature of addiction as to think that people who are in the middle of addiction are going to just adjust to a new system. We're going to lose lives. Our recklessness will be measured in lives. This is not how public health works. This is our city. These are people that we can distinguish from transients that we don't want because it's us.
Wow, that was a tremendous speech. You're clearly, you know, an expert in your field. And I just want to say that I've been leading this charge for years now about the cleanup of Pacific Avenue. You ask any high-level person from the state of New Jersey, any of our department heads, any of our colleagues, I've been leading that charge and not once have needle exchange been mentioned in that. I think that you guys are confusing the facts. Does it contribute to certain things? Absolutely. But I did not say not one time anywhere that needle exchange, quote, "is the problem." The city is just looking to move in a different direction. And I understand you're very passionate about what you do. You're a city resident. And, you know, we really appreciate that. But no one pointed the finger, and I want to correct the record on something that I misspoke about. When I said, and that was through the meeting from Creta, when we said, "Well, a couple days a week in Atlantic City, you know, moving it around like a mobile unit." You know, as I was speaking, my solicitor here said that there's only six municipalities around, so it couldn't go anywhere else. So we had an option to repeal it. For within our jurisdiction. But we understand that, you know, we play a role in the public health crisis as well. We don't want that. So what we did was a compromise, which we do up here a lot of times. It's nine different personalities up here. People have their own opinion and we vet them out. If there's a debate, we respectfully disagree. And just like you said, we want to respectfully disagree. No one's pinning the ills of Pacific and Atlantic Avenue on a needle exchange. We're speaking of overall. So while you thinking that we're not being responsible, I challenge you and say that we are because if we wasn't, it will be repealed. We're doing the right thing. The mobile unit can only be in Atlantic City and we have to deal with it. So that's, no, 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 you can't speak, sorry. That's the rules. And maybe this is your first time here, but we've been consistent with that. And I understand that you would like to speak privately after the meeting. I will certainly engage that. I've never turned down a conversation or a meeting with anyone, and you can ask. This matter was supposed to be deliberated months ago. And what I did against the state said, "We're not going to entertain that until the summer is over." And I gave my word, right? And now we're entertaining it now. So that's, I just wanted to put on the record that I misspoke and my facts were wrong. Just because I sit here doesn't mean that anything I say can't be challenged. But I wanted to put that on the record. Call the next speaker.
Jaclyn, I can't read the last name.
Jaclyn.
Okay.
Okay.
Bob Rinkevich.
He left.
He left.
Bob Rinkevich, I'm the director of the Atlantic City Free Public Library. I guess the crazy thing about the public comment portion of any council meeting is you never know who comes before you and what might be discussed. And maybe if I could introduce maybe a little, after a half an hour of something very heavy, if I could just talk about something maybe positive and light. So please forgive me if I'm going to have a late moment here. I have some brochures, flyers here in the front for everyone to take after the meeting. Please encourage you to take the flyer. I'd like to talk about, the Atlantic City Library has a multicultural music series. The series started in September and runs through February 2019. It's a festival celebrating the diversity of this great city, of Atlantic City, in music and dance. In November, we're celebrating Diwali, which is a Hindu festival of lights. On Saturday, November 3rd at 2:00, the library will be celebrating a music of Diwali at the main library on the second floor with Hindu standing classical music. And I invite everyone to please come out and enjoy the interesting music. Also, the Atlantic City Free Public Library and the city of Atlantic City are collaborating with Stockton University, veterans organizations, and active military members on a series of programs in recognition of the 100th anniversary of the armistice of 1918, the end of World War I. The public is invited to a remembrance ceremony at the Stockton University Atlantic City Academic Center on Saturday, November 10th at 11:00. The ceremony, which will be held in the Fannie Lou Hamer Event Room, will include a posting of the colors by the 177th Fighter Wing of the Air National Guard. There will be a performance by the Stockton Show Choir and a reading of "In Flanders Field" with guest speakers. The keynote speaker will be Colonel Bradford R. Everman, who serves as the commander of the 177th Fighter Wing. Following the remembrance ceremony, attendees will be invited to walk across the street from Stockton Campus to O'Donnell Park and be given a guided tour of the World War I monument, the monument that houses liberty and distress created in the memory of citizens who served in that great war. There are also a few other events. There is a film series at the library during the month of November showing World War I films, including Paths of Glory, All Quiet on the Western Front. We also have an online digital exhibit that we will be showing as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tina Watson.
Good evening, Council. Some of the issues that came up here to discuss, Council are aware of it. We know there's a problem. We have no supermarket. I've been a resident of Atlantic City since I was three. It wasn't a supermarket then, and we still don't have one. I read the article in the press that Creta has hired a council to discuss the problem. It's not the problem of the supermarket, it's the location of the supermarket. That's the problem. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to understand. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to understand. The Renaissance Plaza? No. That's not going to work. They can save the money and figure out somewhere else for the supermarket. The bus stop shelters, especially the one on South Carolina Atlantic Avenue. I catch the bus in the morning. I work at the Venice Park School. When it's raining, I can't stand under the shelter because now homeless people live there. Something needs to be done. We all know there's an issue. Okay, we know there's an issue. Come up with a solution and fix the problem. It's not that hard. The pan handlers. There's an issue. We know there's an issue. Come up with a solution, fix the problem. I don't understand this. Everyone up here is intelligent. It doesn't take that much to figure out these problems and come up with solutions. I don't want to buy another home in Atlantic City. I really don't. I'm working two jobs to buy another home. I will not buy one in Atlantic City. And I like Atlantic City. I work here, I live here, but I will not buy another home here. These issues need to be fixed. Y'all hiring councils and y'all doing studies, come on. This is ridiculous. Creta wastes more money than any organization I've seen. You don't need to spend money on a council to realize that this supermarket right there is not going to work if you put something in. I know I'm not shopping there. I will go to ShopRite. I will go to Walmart. I don't have a car. I will get my little buggy and I will do my grocery shopping offshore. It's a disgrace to the city, to the residents, that we don't have a supermarket. But we can get to see the market. Nothing against see the market, but that's not a supermarket. You have people standing, sitting, have made a park on New York Avenue. I don't go to Renaissance Plaza because of that. And I like Family Dollar. I don't go to CVS anymore. I can't go to my bank. I can't go to the credit union.
And I just wanted to just mention something on one thing that you brought up. And this study is not being funded on the city's dime.
I said Creta.
And just to let you know that they're not talking about Renaissance Plaza. The proposed location is near the convention center, the Ton Tavern, and their Applebee's in that area where, where they, so without getting into, you know, who may be the operator, et cetera, time will tell. And, you know, we'll definitely have public hearings throughout the community to inform the residents of what's going on. I just wanted to mention that.
And while you're here, Ms. Watson, let me just say this.
Ms. Watson. Ms. Watson. We want to answer your question.
I have one more thing. The playground at Venice Park near the school, the latch is broken, can somebody come out and fix it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just for Ms. Watson and the, the audience, as the council president said, in discussions with CRDA, without getting too much into the weeds, it's not just going to be a study, and I hear you, we've all had a lot of studies. This is really an action plan to get the supermarket up and running. And CRDA is making a serious commitment of the land, of construction money, and of other resources to make this work. And the city is going to, at some point, I hope, hopefully my council colleagues will help us support a pilot so we can put a package together that's going to attract the operator that will run a real supermarket. As regards Renaissance Plaza, I'm glad you said that. I had a press conference not too long ago and I, we've been talking to CRDA, and as the council president said, one of the agenda items is for Renaissance Plaza, one, to have increased lighting there, two, to have cameras that are hooked in to the city hall, no, I'm sorry, to the police station, so that we can reduce the foot traffic and the antisocial acts that are happening. Believe me, I walk and I see what's happening in Renaissance Plaza and it's absolutely a disgrace. I talk to business owners and, and people in some of these office buildings, their staff, they don't want to walk there. City Hall staff, the females don't want to walk there because people are making remarks and doing all kinds of things. So we get it. And, and, and we are trying desperately to change it and to make Renaissance Plaza better. But as the council president said, the supermarket won't be located there and we'll have public meetings to apprise people where we're at. But we are acutely aware of, and I take the bus, and I see Ms. Watson almost every day, she's absolutely correct. The people at Brown's Park used to be a needle park and people used to hang and do all kinds of crazy stuff. We got Brown's Park situated and now that doesn't happen. But unfortunately, some of that population has migrated to the bus stop. And that's something that, that we have to work. There's more people not getting the bus at the bus stop than the people getting the bus. The people waiting for the bus have to stand outside the shelter while these other people who are human beings, all on hard times, don't really have a place to stay or they wouldn't be there. But that's just something that we have to, we have to deal with.
All right, Ms. Moore, agenda.
Joyce Malino?
Good afternoon, council president, council members. Renaissance Plaza is a closed up jail. It's, it's boxed in. It should have never been like that. As far as the supermarket, all of you council members know what I said about that years ago, and we still haven't gotten to the place where we had a supermarket. Council president, I heard you speaking about cleanup. How about getting the small corner stores, specifically some in your area, way down on South Carolina Avenue, to do something about the boxes of trash that is stacked up in front of the stores every time it's time to pick up the trash? When the wind blows, and I looked at the little small short boxes they had, they're stacked up with papers, they blow all over the community. Residents don't want to see that. Third ward, how about getting the roads fixed up in front of New York Avenue School? I spoke about this a couple of months ago. What are we going to do about those roads in front of the schools? Do we have anything in the budget to get these, those, these roads done? It's a disgrace how these roads look on, in front of New York Avenue School, Kentucky Avenue. All those roads need to be fixed. Let's clean up the wards. Let's try to help the citizens that are living around. We don't want to see trash. We don't want to see our streets looking like that. We need to clean up and fix up our own homes. I'm calling it our homes, not people that are living in our homes. This is our home, Atlantic City. Start at home. Let, let our communities look good. The ocean and the rock. Do we have a list of how many Atlantic City residents were hard and are still working? You know what happened at Revel? We were supposed to have a list, the list failed, people left. We need to keep a working list on how many of our residents are still employed. Who is in charge of that? And as far as the trains go, on that boardwalk, there's been talk that the trains are only stopping at the Hard Rock and not going all the way down to the ocean. Is that even legal? Ending with the construction office. There's a lot of mice in our office. Can we get somebody to do something about fixing up the construction office with the mice that are making our employees scared out of their wits? Thank you. Have a good evening.
It must, it must be election season, people calling out wards. But I'm a, I can, I can account for what happens, you know, in the second ward. And if anybody should know, you were councilwoman for 15 minutes, so you should know how it goes. We are the liaison, we are the liaison between the residents and whatever department. Any director, any director can tell you, I'm, I'm beyond active when it comes to issues in the second ward, issues involving people in Atlantic City. I could call someone right now and they can go pick up the trash. If it's a busy night in the store, by the time we leave city hall, the trash is piled up. You should know that. So to single out issues, I'm, I'm not only speaking for the second ward of Atlantic City, but when I speak, I speak for the whole city. And it's an issue. And when things need to be said, I'm the one that says it. So I understand, you know, your motives were political. We'll deal with that at another time. But I just wanted to let you know that if all people who should know how things are done, it should be you, Ms. Malino.
Mr. President, if I may, with regard to the store owners, the director has a licensing inspection, Dale has put together a list, and we are getting ready to have a follow-up meeting. We had a hearing that the council president and council Randolph joined me as we heard a number of complaints about some of the stores in the neighborhoods. And we're going to put together a meeting of the store owners to address those issues with the director and with our members of our law enforcement to see how we can address them. And that's, I just said about Renaissance Plaza, I, I think we are moving on that. CRDA does have it, and we have two issues again that we're addressing in Renaissance Plaza. And I think there's a consensus, I don't think there's anybody in Atlantic City who thinks that Renaissance Plaza is representative or safe or makes our city look good. I'm sure that's a consensus. When I had the press conference, some of the people who hang in Renaissance Plaza came and said, you're right, Renaissance Plaza is atrocious. So we all get that. The question is, what are we going to do about it? And I'm saying, the first thing we need to do is to increase the lighting. The second thing that we need to do is to hook in the cameras with the police department. Those are concrete, observable, demonstrative steps that we're going to do. In fact, there's going to be a meeting shortly with Chief, Deputy Chief Sarkos, who is our technical expert, to see how we can do the wiring from Brown's Park, which is already has cameras, to Renaissance Plaza so we can do cameras. Those are things we can do. It's, it's easy to, I want to say, that's what we're going to do with regard to Renaissance Plaza. And the meeting with the store owners is going to be a public meeting. We're going to call the owners together and we're going to sit them down and tell them what they should be doing and what's going to be the penalties if they don't do that.
Ms. Moore, agenda.
Scott Thomas?
Good evening, council, council president. My name is Scott, I'm 3,000 block from Howard Avenue. I watched a stream of last week's meeting. I'd like to make a comment and expand on council president's comments. I quote council president, "The city needs to be ashamed of itself. The city has a long history of things to be embarrassed and ashamed about. There has been great strides to improve. Obviously more needs to be done, but it's time for a team attitude. No one should need to be called out. I don't have a car, I walk the city every day. I see the trees on Atlantic City need to be trimmed, I see the homeless population, I see the illegal activities, I'm approached by the beggars. And may I remind you, there's an ordinance and a permit that allows them to beg. Granted, I don't have any, granted, I doubt any of them have a permit, but there is available." Getting back to team, everyone needs to band together. Councilmen are elected, you interact with the voters and businesses all the time. You need to encourage the, and improve the appearance of the businesses. Sweep up, clean the windows, fix their lights, their broken signs, and encourage more pride in the city. Most important, look at what you can facilitate. Giving due understanding that there has been financial issues. What is the plan to replace pathetic looking rusted public works vehicles that the tourists see? Why couldn't I spend a few hundred dollars on mulch for in front of the public works in city hall? City Hall is the face of the city. On Monday before the airshow, I visited this building. Trash was all over in front. If you look out this window, you'll see weeds. There's no grass, there's no mulch. Since no one has the financial resources, everyone needs to work together and cooperate. Adversarial attitudes need to be curtailed. The city got a boost with the new casino operators in Stockton. I hope everyone knows that this is just a step up and it will not save the city. Great things still need to be done or the city's going to fail. Thank you.
Sean Riordan?
Evening, council. Been an interesting time so far, I guess, tonight here for my second meeting. Reintroduce myself. I'm the guy that moved from South Florida to come here and develop Atlantic City in one of the worst neighborhoods Texas has, in Pacific to be exact. Last time I kind of just came up here and the second my name was called, I started to just throw stuff all around. So I've decided I'm going to attend every single one of these meetings and try to keep it concise and directed. And council president, you keep saying what I am here for and, and why when I make these remarks, it's out of passion. Pacific and Atlantic Avenue are so right. From somebody who sees this place from a tourist's eyes and now as a taxpayer's and resident's eyes, you couldn't be any more right. It is pathetic. Mr. Shabazz, you made a comment how Millville and Camden closed needle exchanges. We closed an Apple Store. Do you know two Apple Stores were ever closed in the entire country? One is Atlantic City, the other one's in Cupertino, California. They closed it just to build a bigger one. Let that sink in. There's a city called Wauwatosa, Wisconsin. Anybody ever even heard of it, let alone been there? What about Mishawaka, Indiana? Same thing. They have Apple Stores in those cities. Now, I just went on the list and picked the two most ridiculous names, but I bet you there's other cities there that we've never heard of either, but Mishawaka, Indiana has an Apple Store. We've lost 32 national retailers that were in the pier shops at Caesar's. Mr. Blatsky purchased that property, was said in his press conference, "I promise you, this will be the number one tourist attraction in Atlantic City." We all have garments we're wearing that need dry cleaners. We all have cars that need servicing. If we took the dry cleaners out of this city, you think anybody would want to be here? We got all these people that come to conventions. Can't get your iPhone, you can't get anything fixed. I mean, how, how did we not put our heads together with somebody who's now announcing 300 apartments in his building before, before all that talk? And Garden Pier, what, shutting down a museum to make it a bar? It's, it's a joke of a place. And, and we're going through all that and we let the Apple Store walk away along with 32 other national retailers. There are two national retailers left in that, in that pier. This is the type of stuff, it, the problem is us. I think councilmen, I believe you said that, we got to look inside. We've got to talk amongst these, you know, these people in the city. The other thing is that 30 seconds for every single one of these, I do, I'm going to stop talking and I want to hear a comment. Please.
I just want to ask you, you think, if, 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 council, council, sorry. If you finish, you can take this, no back and forth after that, we take the questions.
It's fine, yep. I, I want some extra time to hear it, yep.
No, no, I'm saying you have to go back to your seat. You.
I have to what?
You have to go back to your seat.
Everybody else stood up here while you kept talking back?
No, they didn't. Everybody else, that's, that's the procedure in the council chamber. We want to answer your questions, but everybody has to take their seat.
Well, I know when my time's up, right? Because now I have three minutes?
Monica, run the clock, please.
It's just going to be an awkward silence, I guess, every time for 30 seconds.
Crazy things happen here. It doesn't work like that.
I, I just watched other people stand up here and get responded to, so.
No, 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 they don't. Just like we told, the last speaker, Ms. Watson, we told her to take her seat.
He said Ms. Watson.
I said Ms. Watson. Ms., 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 Ms. Malino, can you please keep your public comments down, please? Thank you.
I, I just wanted, I wanted, I guess, reason. You think we were the reason that Apple Corporation made a decision to leave Atlantic City? It's a business decision, correct?
Council president, I applaud the young man's veracity, you know, his, his want and his desire. However, I think that... However, um, I think that the grander scope of things may be viewed differently by different people. Um, the issues that we have as far as the city's concerned and business and what have you, there's a lot of different options or a lot of different components that play a big part of it. The economy itself, the seasons, every little thing. Speak to a person who sells pizza, haven't sold one-third of what they've sold the year before because the weather doesn't permit for people to be able to walk and traverse the boardwalk, so they can't sell pizza. Um, Apple is a product that is popular amongst a certain group of individuals, more now than ever. However, that is a business. I've also faced a big lawsuit. I am a Android user. I don't have the same pain. Um, so it just shows how capitalism and the nation, basically with opposition in business, sometimes take place. Could we do better by speaking more with one another? Absolutely. Are the business entities sometimes self-indulgent and self-absorbed? That they don't think about the impacts or how they can work more efficiently and effectively feeding off one another? Absolutely. Do they do it? No. What do they end up doing? A lot of times, sometimes in failure, sometimes they have to readdress and, and reconfigure their business. Um, that's how business is. There's no perfect fashion, sad to say. Here in the city of Atlantic City, we have to weigh resident life with business life. Too often, we've been put, this dice has been put to the question, who's more important? When you have business owners come in here and they're vibrant and they're, they're really passionate about making their dollars and what have you, and they have a good point of view. However, are your issues more consistent and more important than the resident? Is the value of the dollar with you more important than the value of the human life? Um, and some of the issues? We have to do a better job of it. Everyone sees it differently. We have to do a better job of it. The fact that you live up in Texas, I applaud you. I mean, I have lots of family members that live in that general area. It's kind of hard, difficult. Has history to it. That general area has a lot of history that some people don't, are not aware of. A lot of our communities, I think if we knew that and we had a tendency of cross-referencing and cross-living, we wouldn't be as segregated as we would. We might be a little bit more unified in respecting and appreciating the history of Atlantic City. However, we're at an impasse right now where a lot of changes happen. The economy is hopefully on the swing-up with Hard Rock and Ocean being the two largest businesses that are doing pretty well. Um, we have to support all these other businesses, the mompa shops that live in, that, that work in the business districts. The supermarket itself, we could use a better quality supermarket here. And growing up here, I remember where the city had three supermarkets?
One.
Three? Three? We had eleven, uh, movie theaters. We had skating rink. All kinds of businesses, small businesses that were, were thriving. We had a whole lot more people that worked here. We shared a lot less space. So it's not that we couldn't relive some of those successes. We just have to look at the truths of some of our failures, and we're seeing them now. So, I close out by saying, I applaud, you know, your, your, your setting. Um, sometimes we're just sitting back listening, and we're in agreement, so there's no contention. Sometimes you want to, you want to address, you want to engage. You have opinion. You do. We're not going to engage sometimes because we're supported. We understand. But we just have to figure out our solutions. We can all complain, but until we can find a solution, we don't all have time to complain about the same things. We just got to find the solutions.
Council President, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, yeah, I actually want to thank, uh, Mr. Riordan, you know, publicly for taking a chance and putting your money in our town. It's great. Uh, he, he's joining a growing number of people who are, um, small business people, who are individuals, who are retired, who are growing up, who are entrepreneurs, who are larger businesses that are taking a shot on our town, and that's beautiful to see. And so we, we appreciate that. And what's pretty neat about, uh, yeah, I hope that we'll hear from you in upcoming meetings because it's the participation of people from different aspects of our city that really inform our actions and help us come up with those solutions, um, that you were alluding to. Um, I'd say that with the, you know, we're not unique in addressing some of the issues that we address in the city. Um, and we look at examples all around the country. Uh, but I'd say that for the pier, you know, to be specific, as an Apple diehard, um, I, I'm disappointed that we weren't able to work out the logistics of establishing some type of municipal parking authority with the old Trump Plaza garage to provide stable, affordable parking. Um, I wasn't alone in that idea. Um, I could, you know, acknowledge multiple of my colleagues. You know, Councilman Tippett is one of them.
I don't like to never just love it.
Well, I shared the idea. I may not have been as loud as you at the moment, but I, I did share that thinking with you. Um, and there are a number of people that had ideas like that. Um, and I think that if we're to focus on those things one at a time, there's new leadership at Creta, and they certainly seem to be more responsive to many of us as we bring those ideas to them. And so I'm hopeful that people will stop ignoring the clear-as-day code and criminal violations that take place in your neighborhood as they do in other areas of this town, and stop turning a blind eye to it and being engaged that when we see something, we cite it every time and have more aggressive enforcement. So, um, yeah, kudos to you.
And to give another, um, update, for the sake of transparency, um, it is now mostly cloudy in the council chambers with a southwest wind at fifteen miles per hour and a chilly seventy-five degrees.
Dave Davis?
Mr. Councilperson Small, if I may distribute this before you turn that on. Uh, now set this here, please. Thank you very much. And this is for you. To the clerk, to the clerk. All right, that's for you. And, uh, let's see, uh, uh,
What's that?
Chief White? Can I give it to Chief White?
Give it to his office.
Can I give it to him? All right. And, uh, what happened to Chief Evans? Is Chief Evans here? Is Chief Evans in the hallway?
He was here.
All right, well, now I have to wait. And, uh, let's see, uh, uh, let's see, that's for Chief Evans. And this is for Mr. Shabazz. All right.
Excuse me, you can give the certificates out at the o'clock. Your time is running.
Oh, man. I didn't know that. All right. Mr. Finch. Mr. Finch. All right. I wish I had known that. Gentlemen, what you have in your hands is, uh, a doctorate issued from University of Hard Knocks School of Life. Uh, Mr. Small. All right. "University of Hard Knocks School of Life, Board of Regents of University of Hard Knocks, hereby confers upon Mr. Marty Smalls, Senior, the degree of Doctor of Philosophy." You can read along if you want. Oh, that's right, she's holding it. You don't have your copy, do you? All right. Having, Mr. Doctor Marty Smalls, Senior, Ph.D., from now on, having successfully completed the curriculum of life as demonstrated by having survived high taxes, bad breaks, HMOs, wars, shortages, mortgages, lies, child-rearing, tuition, accountants, lawyers, and, oh, oh, I hate to say it, double-dealing politicians, is awarded this degree with all rights, honors, and privileges here too, issued by President Board of Regents, President of Life, Mr. Justice. Now, on the flip side of that, Marty Smalls is a presidential pardon. "The disgruntled states of America, Presidential Pardon. Know, all men, by these presents that after due consideration, lip-biting, a small bribe, and late-night reflection, I, William Jefferson Clinton, President of these disgruntled states of America, do hereby resolve, redeem, forgive, let off the hook, and pardon Doctor Marty Smalls, Senior, Ph.D. Now, for any and all crimes, offenses, and vulgar behavior, past and present, including drunkenness, adultery, cheating at golf, lying, double-talk, sexual assault, eh, money laundering, bad manners, feminist-enabling, perjury, dove-smoking, draft-dodging, parsing of words, double-dealing, and anything else you can think of, witness my hand, William Jefferson Clinton. And sir, you have a frame. You have the document. Marty, you're covered." Now, how's that for timing?
Thank you.
Can I go back there? Marty, what do you think? Are you happy now? All right, I hope so.
You can put it right in the main key somewhere.
Another person you dumped on us.
Next speaker, please.
Willie Norman?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I came to talk about, I have a slight problem on, my name is Willie Norman. I live at two forty-six North Pennsylvania Avenue. I own a home there. Uh, since the Hard Rock has opened, since the Hard Rock has opened, we started having the container trucks and the recycle trucks coming down Pennsylvania Avenue to two-hundred, three-hundred block. I'm retired now. I did twenty-eight years with the city. I can hear the truck from Adriatic Avenue hitting four gears before it even gets to my house. We got the Boys and Girls Club there. We also have the school. And they're trying to beat the light at Meterranean and Baltic. That's, this has to stop. I mean, uh, they didn't come down there before. I worked with the city, and I remember the way that the buses and the trucks used to come into the city. The only way that you would come in if you was a bus or you had, um, container truck, Delaware Avenue was your entry. Delaware was that way that you left. When McKell's Funeral Home was on Pennsylvania Avenue, there was a sign up there that says, what the weight of the trucks were. When they built the school, they took the sign down. Now the trucks are coming through. They rambling in the houses as they come through. And they also starting to crack the sidewalks. And these trucks are just too heavy for that road. Pretty soon, we're going to have more leaks there. Uh, we had two already, and then the sewage company had, uh, collapsed. So those vehicles are too heavy to ride down Pennsylvania Avenue. So, I'm just asking for somebody, you know, to do something about it. And also, they tearing the trees up.
All right, um, the BA, I know the director's here. If, um, Kristen, who's the assistant director, um, she, she's, I'm sure she's taking the proper notes to get on the issues with the trees, and I asked the BA and, you know, maybe, you know, Director Finch and the Police Department to be on the lookout for those, uh, trucks. And we spoke in the hallway about it, so I wanted you to come and put it on the record. So that way we can get it to proper attention. And if it's not any better, next, we got a meeting in two weeks, come back and, you know, give us an update. If you can. All right, appreciate it. Thanks. Have a good night. Thank, thank you for your service, too.
Council President, didn't we, didn't we have, um, is there something written in as far as container trucks and deliveries of, of, with weight capacity as far as the city, some of the streets and roads? What is, is, what is usable and what isn't? We need, we, maybe we need to go back to it. Because I've seen a lot of, uh, containers, larger vehicles go down residential areas. And, um, I mean, Arctic Avenue is like a really tight space. We've seen these large vehicles stopping. I think maybe we just need to, probably possibly, Council President, your, your committee or maybe Public Safety Committee have the traffic portion of it. See what we can do to readdress that, because with the big corporations over it, um, they're, they're going to need larger things that are coming in. We have to make sure that that doesn't impede in residential life or a risk to them or the, the city at all. So it's something we can look into.
The Council President?
Yes.
Uh, container, container truck is not just the only problem. Speeding, speeding vehicles, speeding down Firma Avenue, Hard Avenue, and Antae Avenue, going forty, fifty mile per hour is problematic. Anyway, we can, uh, get that resolved, we can put more, more signs up. I don't think there's enough signs, just speeding signs, like that. I pray one of these days, you know, kid running, running the street, cars going forty, fifty mile per hour, I don't want to see that tragedy happen.
Motion, F.
Thank you. Uh, wanted to let you know that Home Initiative will be starting our next series of homeownership classes, probably November twenty-sixth over at Second Baptist Church. It'll be going on from, we'll have seven classes till end December seventeenth, so I want to mention that. And I just found out while I was over there that, uh, next Sunday, not this Sunday, Sunday the fourth, is Reverend Day's twenty-fourth anniversary over there as well. So that's, uh, I was surprised, pleasant milestone to, to hear. Uh, what's also not, excuse me, I saw an email that, um, Stockton through the Carnegie Center be holding a seminar on November seventh with micro lenders for people who are interested in opening up small businesses. Micro lenders are people who loan money up to fifty thousand dollars for new businesses. They do look at credit and other issues, but, um, if anybody you know is interested in opening a business and needs some financing, uh, you may want to check, uh, that site out. Uh, these people who usually make these loans are not the banks. They're more nonprofit groups or others. I'm not doing that, but they do that sort of thing, and they, they're more involved with the business overall to make sure that the money's paid back and the people have a chance to grow, so please keep that in mind. And, uh, you said the next meeting's November seventh?
Yes, two weeks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Stephen Young?
Steve Young, and I'm here. Is this Mike working?
Yes.
I'm here on behalf of National Action Network, South Jersey chapter, Reverend Stockton. I just want to start off by saying, you know, we have, uh, council meetings, and we have public portions for three minutes. And it's very important that the public get a chance to speak. And we need, we need to consider doing some town hall meetings on certain issues so people can be heard. Uh, second of all, these social life issues that we're talking about, these quality of life for people standing out, walking around, and drugs, and we got to realize, Casino Control Act as well as Casino Reinvestment Development Authority, they were for the social, economic, and housing issues. They have the revenue, and it's about the resources being given out to the people that can make a change and deal with this issue. So we need to talk about where the blame supposed to be at and talk about the solution. Casino Reinvestment Development Authority. Being out here right in front of city hall. See, all these people are not homeless, on drugs. Some of them are just nodding out there because they don't have no place to sleep at night. So when you see somebody nod, don't think they're always on drugs. Some of them don't have a place to sleep at night. So they're nodding so they won't get a ticket, so they won't go to jail if they fall asleep in the public. Very important, listen to the people. You will know that. Interact with them. Don't just walk by them. It's about enforcement, quality of life. Another issue, the Public Safety, Safety Civilian Review Board. We talked about it. We talked about it since nineteen twenty-twelve. We've been talking about it, and you have a resolution about it. It's been talked and it's in the, uh, plan to actually have a civilian advisory board. We don't need to be handpicking nobody that don't have nothing to do and never been involved with no, uh, no police-involved issues as well as senseless killings out here when it comes to being out here in our community with our people going to, through, as well as enforcement. So when you pick somebody for this, don't just have, handpick no rubber stamps for these positions. Pick the people that's been involved and been consistently out there in our communities. Chapter forty-one, that's where it's at. Read it. Read it, come back to the community, have a public meeting, let's talk about it. Affirmative action. I don't know why we don't have affirmative action officer. We haven't had one since Barbara Kemper left here. So how can you have equal employment and talk about business opportunities if we don't have affirmative action officer? And that goes for whether civil service or collective bargaining. Where do people go if they have an issue that, that's dealing with being treated equally when it comes to employment, employment as well as being treated equally when it comes to businesses? How long is it going to take? When will it be done? As well, and that's the question I have right now. I'll wait for the answer. I'm waiting for the answer.
As far as, and it's not a civilian review board, it's a community advisory board and committee. And City Council, uh, has its picks. The mayor has his picks. And there's various members representing the various civic associations throughout the city of Atlantic City. So we'll be well, uh, represented. And at the proper time, we'll announce who is gonna be representing City Council. And I'm sure the board will be picked and I'm sure that there's gonna be disagreements among people in the community, but the selections will be the selections. That's all I can speak on on that note. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Anyone else from the public like to speak? Saying now, public portion is closed, let's move the agenda.
Okay, we have ordinances on second and final reading. Uh, ordinance number three is an ordinance amending chapter ninety-two. And this is, uh, creating section ninety-two point one-two permitting the erection use of fire pits.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Move by Tippett?
Second.
Second by Shabazz. Anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Saying now, public portion is closed? Discussion up here?
Yeah, um, I read the packet and it doesn't have locations on where this is gonna be. Um, if someone could, uh, fill me in on the locations of these, or is it gonna be everywhere on the beach?
Yeah, pretty determined.
Chief was here. Anyone?
I can answer that. Um, the, the ordinance allows them to exist on the beach and then it'll be up to administration to vet, uh, particular implementation in an area.
On where they're gonna go?
Yeah. And it wa- it wouldn't be, um, this is not a, by any means, a free for all. The city would designate, they have to be a specific size so they meet the state definition of what's called a recreational fire. And it has to be a specific material that's signed off on by our fire, um, fire safety.
I'm Mike. So, so we, so when these fire pits do go down there wherever they are designated, um, you still have to go get approval to use, uh, use them. It's not a first come, first served, uh, free for all out there? Is that the understanding?
Uh, these, these pits would be first come, first served. It would be akin to the barbecue grills that we already have on the beach.
Okay, okay, I believe council, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Doctor, Council President?
For now, but Doctor's my wife.
I, I just want to be sure that, um, council decides, we have to vote on where these things go. And I want to be sure, I mean, it's not administrative. We give the administration the authority to put these things where they go. And then they administer who uses them or however the ordinance reads, like you said, a free for all. I wanna, uh, not a free for all, a, a first come, first served. I'm sorry about that. Um, I just want to be sure that if they're going residential neighborhoods, that we pick the residential neighborhoods. We make sure those residential neighborhoods want them in their neighborhood. Especially when there's not a permit process of getting when you could use them. Um, we've done good things for people in the community and it ended up blowing up in our faces. Where we helped, where we purged the neighborhood. So I want to be sure that, A, council is the one that decides where these go. We give the administration the approval to put them there. And then I would like to see, I, I'm a little concerned on first come, first served because they can come from all over. And I don't want to see them, like, for instance, at one time, Bartram Avenue was, uh, was specifically named to have one there permanently. And a lot of people have come to me and asked me about that. And I said I would get the answers for them. And that I would speak at the meeting, that if they watched the meeting, they would get some of these answers. So I want to be careful in residential neighborhoods that people from all over on a first come, first served, don't come there. You know what happens. I've done it. I'll have a beer down there. Everybody's gonna have a beer down there. They see the cops coming, they drop the beer, nobody knows who they are. We don't want to have a situation like that in the residential neighborhoods. That's all I'm asking to be cautious on. And that, remind you, council picks where they go. We make approval for these things to be on the beach. And then the administration takes it after we vote for it and they administer how it's used and when it's used.
Council President, I have a concern with, with, with the, uh, month. Uh, I think it should be November, uh, as opposed to December and March as opposed to February.
I think you're round myself.
I just enjoy it, you know, hurricane season, November instead of December.
Council President, I recommend that we really do a study upon it, uh, do a little bit more research because we have to, not all the beaches may fit, uh, may be safest. Like some beaches are smaller, uh, than other beaches. So if you have the flare ups, the wind itself, uh, oxygenation of the fire itself, whatever, the combustible product could go up in the air all of a sudden fifty feet away, you have a fire that you didn't intend to have. But recreationally speaking, we gave them opportunity to have it because they, they fit the bill, got the permits and what have you. So we just have to make sure that safety's first, recreation's second. Um, and then wherever we designated, make sure that, I, I, I think I'm more inclined to have specific spots where we can regulate from than to have it open on all beaches. Um, cause I think it's probably easier for, say, if we have a fire, say if the fire gets a little bit beyond, you have some people who are just pyrotechnics. I mean, they're just pyro freaks. They want to have this huge bonfire. Exactly, yeah, exactly. And then all of a sudden, we need to call four or five firehouses to come on and put in the fire with, they, they put in like Agent Orange to light up the, you know, we, we got some interesting individuals. So, there's a lot of concerns with it.
Jesse, could we, uh, could we vote on this to create the allowance of these? And then maybe by the next council meeting, have, like, um, have locations on where they're gonna be, so that we could settle that once, so that there's no question marks. I mean, I'll vote for your ordinance tonight to create it and then the next meeting, let's have the locations. And give you a chance to talk to those people in the neighborhood, make sure it's something they want. Because let's face it, the people that live there, the people that pay taxes there, the people that have to sleep there. Let's make sure they're in agreements with it. And let's find areas where we disturb the least amount of people.
And I think everybody's comments have been, they're spot on about it. Um, I think, um, just one thing to mention is that, uh, I went, not only speaking with our fire officials, but spoke with the state fire code official to confirm that everything is prescribed and this ordinance is within the fire code. So like, we're completely in line with state regulations concerning recreational fires. And I think the relation is the ordinance allows it to happen in a general sense. And then we can through resolution accept the gift, which the plan is that people who are interested in the community would be able to gift one of these structures. So it wouldn't be, in fact, Creed is even, not to pick on Creed, uh, Creed likes the idea too. Um, and has been expressed interest in funding one of these structures and the city would accept by resolution at the next meeting or the meeting after. It might take a little while. I'm not in a rush to put in anybody's area. I want community involvement. And there's people, um, there are some people that were, um, distorting the idea, but there's also some people who really like the idea. And are big, big league taxpayers that live on beach blocks and everything and want to see this near them. So we're gonna work that out and definitely come back to everybody.
A- a- as well as maybe a simple free permit where you go down to the city, just fill out the paperwork that you're gonna use it or something. Because again, Ventnor-Margate-Lonport will not allow this on their beach. But the city of Atlantic City, we understand how to have fun and take advantage of the nature's assets that we have here, the beaches. I don't want to see them coming down and flooding our beaches to use the stuff because, once again, we do the fun stuff. Why Millionaire's Road down there doesn't want that in their neighborhood.
We have to clean all the beer bottles and all this rest shit.
Once again, I, I would like to find out who came up with the munt.
I like you round.
No, I'm serious. Who came up with the munts? And how was it determined these were the munts?
There, this, um, pardon, uh, this issue, uh, we talked about it in a couple, uh, different committees. Uh, at the very least, it was, uh, Public Safety, Public Works and in the, what we affectionately call the, the Walmart Committee, uh, my committee. Um, and through joint conversation, those were the munts that were come up with. I mean, I, I would accept the friendly amendment to alter, um, you know, December to November. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think this is something that, it's like a lot of things when you're early adopter. Um, people have a lot of questions, but I'm, I'm, in my mind, I envision us doing one in an area that has buy-in. And people realize like, wow, this is cool. And that's what generally the reaction to it has been, like, man, this is cool, it's vibrant, it's something that's neat on the beach. And then once that happens, that then it would just, you know, it would make more sense going forward.
All right, you call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine and the affirmative. We have ordinance twenty-eight, and this is, uh, an agreement with urban renewal entity, Elliot House, for, uh, time of payment, move taxes.
Move it, may I have a motion? Move it. Move by Shabazz. Dodge for lack of a second? It died for lack of a second?
Too late.
Uh, move, move the agenda, Paul.
Doctor, you didn't hear me say second.
We have two seconds, Doctor.
Second, second by Marsh. Any, anyone from the public which to speak on? Saying now, public portion is closed, discussion? Saying now, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-nine is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement, uh, for the E, uh, energy saving program.
E S I. May I have a motion? Move it.
Second.
Move by Shabazz, second by Marsh. Anyone from the public like to speak? Saying now, public?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Um, could someone, uh, explain this whole ordinance and what, what we're gonna be getting out of it? And what it's about? I read it and I didn't fully understand it. So I'd like an explanation.
Yeah, I mean, if I, if I may, uh, Council President, can I answer that question? Your question again was, uh, explain the E S I program and what it entails?
Yes.
Well, the E S I, um, stands for energy saving. We're so close, I thought you could hear me.
No, it's not just for me.
Oh, I'm listening, okay. Uh, the Energy Savings Improvement Program is, uh, just what it sounds like. It's a program to, um, I guess to, to budget your monies. And you're able to finance, uh, energy saving programs through the savings of the, uh, the revenue saved in the cost of the improvement. An example would be to put a new HVAC system in, there would be a significant cost of savings there. That new improvement, that asset would be leased back to the financing company. And the savings in the, uh, the energy, energy savings would provide the revenue to pay for the new costs. So it's nothing out of pocket, uh, to the city. It's a great plan. Uh, the hardest part of it is getting the financing. And I think we're almost there with that. And, uh, this program is moving forward with, uh, more improvements other than the HVAC also. Systems. Can I answer any other specific questions about it?
Well, it looks, the lease looks, uh, uh, how long is the lease?
Ms., Ms., Ms. Marlenow? He's gonna answer your question. You know, you know the rules, it's three minutes speed, it's two questions, but you have to take a seat whilst you ask the questions.
Well, the, uh, the term of the lease will be determined by the financing and that's, that's being worked out right now. Uh, different assets, different, the HVAC system.
Ms., Ms. Marlenow, you have to have a seat.
I don't hear what you got to say. I'm, I'm not gonna answer him anymore question.
No, but I'm saying, but that's.
I mean, but what's the problem with the seat? I'm just trying to listen to what he's saying, huh? I'm not gonna answer him another question. I'm not.
I get that, but you know the rules.
What's the rule? The rule is you have to sit. Is that the rule?
Yes, it is. That's the rule. Ms. Marlenow, you can ask two questions. That is the rules. You know more than others.
No, I never heard you say that until tonight, that you had to sit down.
Well, I, I guess you wasn't paying attention.
But in short, the, uh, the term of the lease will be determined by the ultimate decision on what financing we choose.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. You are. Move the agenda, please.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
You can't answer the question, Mr. Young. Are you coming in for the public portion? I thought you was. I ain't taking nothing personally.
I didn't get a chance to speak on something.
I thought you were getting up as a rebuttal to her question, but now I know.
Can you explain, um, section three of this ordinance? It says, "A lease agreement should on no event exceed an amount of seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars." Yes, ordinance number twenty-nine, uh, page two.
So again, it authorizes an amount to spend under this program for capital improvements of up to seven point seven five million dollars. That's all gonna be determined based on the response to the RFP for a lease to save money. It's a moving target. Interest rates are moving, that's part of the lease. So there's a wish, a shopping list, if you will, of capital improvements throughout the city. Streetlights, HVAC at this building, at city, at Public Safety, um, Public Works, more buildings that the city owns. So there's a whole shopping list. Each of those have to be determined whether there will be savings.
I was just wondering why it become over seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand instead of ten million or five million? Is that, who set the amount and set amount?
Well, Public Works was involved, the engineer was involved, our, our energy, there's a consultant as far as the energy savings improvement program. They looked at all the different buildings, age of the equipment, et cetera. Which needs to be replaced.
Next question. If I could say now, call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tippett?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes. I'd like to make a resolution to bring on, uh, I'd like to make a resolution to group ordinances on first reading, regular resolutions. Move agents, bring one in the dock.
Second?
Move by?
I moved.
Move by Shabazz.
Second?
Second by Chang. Final words?
I'm good.
Tippett?
I need four A. No, 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 take, not four A, excuse me, four B. I want to register a no vote on five ninety-eight.
I'm sorry, what, what are you doing with four B, Councilor?
Oh, I want to pull that off for discussion. Um, registered a no vote on five ninety-eight. And I'd like to pull off for discussion eleven A for first reading, please.
All right, Chang?
I'm good.
Marsh? Kurtz?
Uh, I'd like to co-sponsor under Planning and Development, uh, five eight two. And then under Revenue and Finance, number five seven two. And I didn't see what this gets grouped under, but resolution five six seven, I'd like to co-sponsor that. Not sure which group that is.
Five sixty-seven is not on the agenda.
It's up here, buddy.
It's up here, but it's not on the agenda.
It's a new business.
That's, that new business is for November seventh meeting.
Okay. All right, then disregard that one. Um, and I have to register an abstention on, uh, five nine four because I'm a member of the Housing Authority. And that's all.
Shabazz?
Mr. Chairman, I'm all right except for five ninety-one. I'd like to be recorded as an abstention on five ninety-one.
Delgado?
I'd like to be recorded, no on five ninety-eight. I'd like to pull off five seventy-six as for a quick question. I'd like to be recorded, no on 598, I'd like to pull off 576, just for a quick question.
Not good, Paul.
Okay. So we will be voting on first reading ordinance 4A, as amended to read, uh, ordinance, amending ordinance is eighty-five, we vote seven and fifty-five, we vote for to provide, to establish mobile sterile syringe units. Eleven D, an ordinance amending chapter ninety-two pertaining to horses. Eleven C, an additional name and designation of the 700 block of Lexington Avenue to be known as Reverend Dr. John W. Howard Senior Way. Five sixty-eight, five seventy, five eighty-two, five ninety-two, five fifty-two, five fifty-four, five fifty-five, five fifty-eight, five sixty-four, five sixty-six, five sixty-nine, five seventy-one, five seventy-two, five seventy-seven, five seventy-nine, five eighty, five eighty-one, five eighty-four, five eighty-five, five eighty-six, five ninety-one, five ninety-three, five ninety-four, five fifty, five sixty-five, five seventy-eight, five eighty-three, five eighty-seven, five eighty-eight, five ninety-five, five ninety-seven, five ninety-eight. And that's it, with the exceptions, um, exceptions noted as no vote, Councilman Delgado on 598, no vote, Councilman Tibbet on 598, Councilman Kurtz co-sponsoring 572 and 582. Abstentions, Councilman Kurtz on 594 and 591, and Councilman Tivett, the ordinances that you're pulling are four B and eleven A, correct?
Council President, I've got a quick question, parliamentary procedure, with regards to 4A. Um, I saw that there was a secondary ordinance placed in, is this to replace 4A, is this an accompanying amendment?
The one on the dice is, boy.
Yeah, it can replace it.
Because the, this says differently, no, I mean, so we have to make sure that they're even.
Yeah. Council President, now, if I may register, a no vote for 598, please.
Councilman Chang, no vote, 598.
I think so, Paul, did you get my abstention on, uh?
591.
591, okay, all right, thank you, great, thank you.
Okay, all in agreement?
Yes.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randall? I'm sorry, Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
So that's eight and the affirmative with the exceptions noted. So the first item that we are pulling for discussion is ordinance 4B, and this was pulled by Councilman Tibbet. This is an ordinance amending section one sixty-three, and this is regulating residential fencing.
May I have a motion? Move it, Mr. President. Move by Shabazz, second by Tibbet.
Mr. Finch, I believe this falls under your, no, it doesn't fall under your, oh, a council sponsor, but you are the expert on this. It falls under your Neighborhood Services, this ordinance? Okay, are you, what I was, the, the ordinance is fine how it reads, but it leaves out situations where you have a front on one street, and your back is also a front to another street. You have corner properties where the fencing is supposed to be lower. And I wanna just make sure that, that what you have in there is fine, but if we could get something in there at the next meeting, or, you know, addressing corner properties, you know, there's laws on the books that say the fence has to be so low at a corner property, as well as something to address when you have two fronts, when your front yard is a main street, and your backyard is a main street, is a front to everybody else. You, you understand what I'm, what I'm saying? Okay, oh, okay, so, I, I'm not sure what, I thought, I'm sorry, uh, could we please address that by the next meeting? For those situations, 'cause we have quite a bit of that in the city, where people have a front and a back, which is also their front to another block? So that you don't have a six-foot fence, I'll go over it with you after the meeting? And, and the corner properties, as you know, corner properties are supposed to be a lot lower on that corner, as far as, for sites, for traffic coming, uh, all different ways, so we could address that, and, absolutely, thank you very much, that's all I had.
Call a vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado? Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh? Uh, Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Seven and the affirmative. We have ordinance eleven A, pulled by Councilman Tibbet, and this is designating additional handicap parking spaces.
May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Move by Tibbet?
Second.
Second by Delgado?
Good discussion. Okay, um, Jesse, your name's on it, um, just a question, maybe you can help me to answer it, um. Couple years ago, I snapped on Mr. Jerkins for allowing a handicap parking at Chelsea Heights when the person had a fifty-foot-long driveway double-wide. Why would you allow someone to have a handicap parking, just so that somebody doesn't park in front of your house? We have serious parking issues in, in that part of the sixth ward, as well as creeping over to Chelsea Heights, those parking problems. Do these properties, did you get an opportunity to check these properties and see if they have off-street parking already at their house? Before we grant a handicap parking? Like, with everything good, there's always the possibility of abuse. You see what happens with these therapy dogs, medical marijuana cards, and I can almost give myself a handicap too. I'm sure by sixty days, I can find a doctor to give me one. So I just wanna be sure that if we're gonna give a handicap, make sure they need them, make sure they don't have off-street parking already. Because they, a lot of people don't want people parking in front of their houses, or they'll park their handicap car in that handicap spot and let their spouse now park in the driveway. It's all those games when you have the parking issues that we do in that area. So, I, can this wait a, a meeting, um, or we can vote on it tonight, and if I go there tonight, and I will go there tonight, and see if they have off-street parking, I'll contact you, and then, uh, we'll revisit this on the second reading, if they do in fact have off-street parking already.
Yeah, that sounds fair, I know, uh, both of these cases, it came up to our, our committee, and, um, they have been instances where, um, I'm not a doctor, but from my kind of common sense observation, both people were definitely disabled. The one gentleman's like, either fully or mainly fully disabled veteran, um, and your cases you mentioned are, are absolutely. People unfortunately take advantage, yeah, they, they do take advantage of it, but, um, it was, I can sort of, um, put the request in with the police, they were involved, and the public works, and it kinda got, with all due respect, everybody got bounced around, and I felt bad for these people, and finally, uh.
Listen, they need it, they don't have off-street parking, and I support them a hundred percent, whether they're, that, this, that, if they're disability and they need it, I support it a thousand percent. But, you know, other disabled people in my same block that I flipped out about, when you got a fifty-foot-long driveway double-wide, and the shortest route is from your personal driveway to your front door to your handicap ramp, and then you put it in front of your house, there's still abuse, because people don't want people parking in front of their house. So I just, the only, only thing I'm requesting is that we go look at this ourselves, and whenever they come up, in your wards, you should look at them, make sure they don't have off-street parking, so that, we see it all the time with the dogs everywhere, so, same thing. So, I'll vote on it tonight, but if they do have all sight, I think we need to look at that, if it's fact, it has off-street parking.
All right, let's move it.
Okay, Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight and the affirmative. We have resolution five seventy-six.
May I have a motion? Move it. Move by Marsh, second by Shabazz.
Uh, Councilman, I had asked to pull this for a discussion, a quick question, uh, Chief Skelton, did the?
See you there.
He got away, okay. I just wanted to find out, was, uh, is this vehicle already intended for a specific use, Steve?
I don't know what the specific use is, there is a request that came from the chief, or the vehicle, I do not know the specific use.
Okay, uh, the reason I ask is because in prior times, God bless you, it was used, um, for some activities, police activity. There was one vehicle that was in question, that ended up being, um, furnished to have a brand-new engine, uh, a certain strong, big boy, big block engine in a vehicle, and that vehicle ended up being auctioned off. And the people that were using it knew that it was doing that, intending to buy it for real cheap to get that, and they end up doing it.
Yeah, Harley motorcycles?
Yeah, I know, it was, it was a big Marauder, it was one of the vehicles that we had, so, I know at times, people don't pay attention, stuff like that, so. I'm just, just making sure that it's intended for the use whatever it is.
All right.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight and the affirmative, and we now have executive session.
May I have a motion? Move it. Move by Marsh, second by Chang.
Okay, resolution five fifty-nine, A, G Jabar versus City of Atlantic City Workers Comp, B, V McDaniel versus City of Atlantic City Workers Comp, C, K Austin Workers Comp, and D, M Sykes Workers Comp. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
No.
Seven and the affirmative, one and negative, about how long, please?
Ten minutes.
That's my mind back all the time, come on.
Council President, we're back on the record, we have four resolutions for settlement after executive session. We have resolution five sixty, this is for, uh, G Jabar versus City of Atlantic City. Would you like to?
Can we group them all together?
No, group, group it together.
Okay, do we have a motion to this group?
Mr. President, I make a motion, we group all those, uh, resolutions together.
And we can second them?
Go, Jimmy.
You, you don't, no, no, hold it. You really should get a second for him, we're gonna second you tonight.
Second.
All right, let's go. Let's go.
Okay, so resolution five sixty, and that's G Jabar versus City of Atlantic City, five sixty-one, V McDaniel versus City of Atlantic City, five sixty-two, K Austin versus City of Atlantic City, and five sixty-three is M Sykes. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Uh, Chabaz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
He left the building.
Okay, and Marsh?
Yes. Go for a German.
Oh, Council President, just wanted, I mean.
I'm not, I'm not playing it tonight, man, I'm, I'm in charge, man.
I understand.
My heart, y'all, we are.
I just wanted to make sure to remind everybody, on, uh, Monday, the twenty-ninth of October, I'll be having my yearly Share and Sphere Distribution Calendar, I mean, costumes for kids who can't afford, uh, costumes on their own. So, it's in the Atlantic City Freedom Library on the second floor, in the youth, in the hall inside the second floor.
What time is it?
So it's from three-thirty PM till five PM, uh, unfortunately closes at five, we gotta start by the time that the kids come in. So it's first come, first served, as long as the kids come with parents, when adults, um, they get a costume that they like. If anyone has anything to donate to the program, it will be, uh, accepted and, and.
Where, where, donate to whom?
Uh, donate, you can call me, contact me, six oh nine four six four zero seven three six, or contact me through the City Hall. I know the, the clerk's office has been behind with, and if you have to drop something off, just let, if you wanna drop off the City Hall, I'll make sure I get the costumes and distribute it to the children on Monday, the twenty-ninth. Over at Atlantic City Republic Library, thirteen thirty drop, thanks again.
Mr. President, real quick, uh, Wednesday, October thirty-first, from twelve to one, in this room, we're gonna have the president of Atlantic Cape Community College, Dr. Barbara Gabber, uh, for my planning and development update. It's very important, uh, residents whose family income is less than $45,000 can go to Atlantic Cape Community College for free. So people should, uh, come out, and, and if everyone who has a Facebook or an account would, please put that up, I would appreciate that.
Is that, is, is there, um, is, um, is there a age limit, man?
There's no age limit, no, this, this is, this program is, is the governor's new program for free community college, so there's no age limit, anybody.
I just need to know.
But you already have a degree.
Well, what's, what's the problem?
What's wrong with the mask?
Go for a German.
Our council president has a PhD.
Councilman Tibbet for the record, and you would like to vote?
Yes, vote for them, yes.
Resolution five sixty, five sixty-one, sixty-two, and sixty-three, so that makes.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Seven and the affirmative.
I know y'all miss me, don't you?
Don't forget the city.
All the time, time, Jason, it's like all the time.
Don't forget the citywide trunk of trees, Christmas Day, Halloween.
Go for a German.
Don't move.